It is Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, six P. M. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. We join Commissioner Hodges in the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we ask your attendance at deliberation of the City Council this evening as it seeks to do thy will in consideration of the issues before them. Bless the members of this assembly, the citizens that are present at this meeting, and all the residents of the city of Madeira Beach. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Amen.
City Clerk, will you call a roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Price.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that anyone would like to pull or move?
Mayor, request that, under item nine, public hearings, that we move items D and E to be heard first, followed by items A, B, and C.
Okay. Anything else? Next is March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two municipal election ballot referendum and charter amendments. Question and answer session. The floor is open. City Clerk, would you like to read those amendments, please?
Yes, I will. We have one referendum question and three charter amendments on the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two ballot, and I'll read those into the record. And after each one, I'll give the public an opportunity to ask any questions if they have. The referendum question, authorize the sale of real property located at one, three, two, two, Third Street East for an amount equal to or in excess of its fair market value. This is to propose to recoup accumulated fines and maintenance costs and avoid future insurance premiums required to prevent liability for the city. Shall this sale be approved? Any questions on that one? Okay, next is the first charter amendment of City of Madeira Beach, number one charter amendment. The heading reads elector and residence requirement for candidate seeking the office of mayor or district commissioner. The question is, this charter amendment would amend subparagraph A of section three point three of the charter to provide that candidate seeking the office of mayor or district commissioner be an elector and resident of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, one year prior to the date of said application, should the charter be amended. The charter at the moment is, the requirement is two years. This changes it to one year if it should pass. Any questions? The next one is City of Madeira Beach, number two charter amendment. Candidate petition forms requirement for candidate seeking the office of mayor or district commissioner. The question reads, this charter amendment would amend subparagraph C of section three point three of the charter to provide that candidate seeking the office of mayor or district commissioner shall submit twenty-five candidate petition forms signed by qualified voters of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, and to delete the qualifying petition fee requirement should the charter be amended. Yes or no? The current charter is that they get one hundred signatures and not the twenty-five, so that changes it to twenty-five, and, but they can get fifty and not fifty, and not hundred, but pay a fifty-dollar petition fee. And this also eliminates the fifty-dollar petition fee. Any questions? The last one, City of Madeira Beach, number three charter amendment. Elections held in March each year for the purpose of electing successors to elective offices. This charter amendment would amend subparagraph A of section three point four of the charter to provide that all elections shall be held in the city on the first Tuesday after the second Monday in March, with the exception of the presidential preference primary election every four years of each year for the purpose of electing successors to elective offices to meet the requirements of the Pinellas County Supervisors Elections, should the charter be amended. The current city charter is that the elections be held the second Tuesday of March of every year. And the supervisors of elections in the city charter allow governs that they do the elections, and so they follow state law, which is the first Tuesday after the second Monday in March. So we, we're just changing that to conform to their requirements. And so, does anyone have any questions on that one? I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is presentations. First is firefighter of the year, firefighter paramedic Eric Hubles, is that correct? Okay, I am so sorry. This southern accent gets tongue-tied enough without you throwing me a curve.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission. Thank you for allowing us a few moments of your time this evening. Chief Belk would like to apologize for his absence tonight, but he is in a conference this week. This first presentation is for our two thousand and twenty-two firefighter of the year. Eric Hubles began his career with Madeira Beach Fire Department in two thousand and sixteen and has been an essential member of this department from day one. He is an acting driver engineer, an acting lieutenant, and is a union representative for the Madeira Beach Firefighters Association with I. F. F. His professional demeanor and positive attitude are recognized by his peers and by the citizens of Madeira Beach. Eric Hubles continues to be a leader in the department. Eric puts himself aside to do what's best for this department. Eric deserves this recognition. These are only a few words that came from his peers. So for the second time this year, Madeira Beach Fire Department career, in his career, I'd like to present Eric Hubles as Madeira Beach firefighter of the year.
Oh, nice. Very good.
Thank you very much. Next is introduction of community risk reduction program. We're not going to let you get away that easily.
Great, all right. Excuse me, I'm just looking for my notes here. This is a new program for this fire department. There are some similar like this one. St. Petersburg, Clearwater, some of the bigger departments, but this one, I feel like we needed this in our community. And it's called community risk reduction. Many different programs under this name. So what does it entail? Smoke detectors. We've had this program previously, but it was discontinued some years ago due to cost. We have been able to get sponsored through the American Red Cross to provide us with smoke detectors and to install into residents' homes. Those will be done by either myself, the on-duty crew, or Chief Belk. If we respond to a call for service and see that the resident is in need of a smoke detector, we will install it for free. Or we can be contacted and schedule an installation. The second thing, it's a fire and hurricane hygiene kits. As we all know, we've been through some hurricanes and some pretty bad times here recently in the past couple of years, and some people have been displaced and don't have anything. I thought that these kits would be, even though they're small, they can at least get away with some hygiene kits for at least a day or two until they get back on track. The Salvation Army were also gracious enough to sponsor us and provide us with hygiene kits that we will provide to residents who are displaced from a fire or other disasters. These kits also include face masks, body wipes, toothbrushes, toothpaste, rags, deodorants, bottle of water, MREs, if anybody knows what that is, little bag of food for a day. The other program we have also is water safety. We will provide this once or twice a year in the spring or summertime, depending on the need. These were donated through Pinellas County EMS Administration and the Jordan Hopkins All Children's Hospital. Fall prevention is a huge one. So we have a program also, it's fall prevention, safety inspection. We kind of intertwine the two because it's easier doing it that way than to separate them both and have scheduling issues. So what this involves is having a large elderly community, falls are preventable or prevalent call that we respond to every single day. If we can assist and reduce the hazards in the home, then of course, this will save the residents from an injury and allow our apparatus to respond to more serious calls. This includes a home safety check and some information on the ways to avoid falls. A safety inspection can be done, provided as well, at their request. It is free of charge and not fine them for any violations. So we just want to put that out there, okay? It is, of course, free of charge, no code violations, but we also want to prevent fires, falls, and injuries. A lot of this prevention, it is coming from the Pinellas County Fall Prevention and Elderly Services, along with Fall Free Pinellas County Coalition. Bicycle safety. Provide bicycle helmets and training to be a defensive rider. This is also provided in conjunction with All Children's Hospital. CPR still continues at the fire department. Continue to provide CPR training to our residents and visitors and expand the program to include pet CPR. And that's through the American Heart Association. I do have a display back here, if anybody wants to take a look at some of the little goodies that we do have at the fire department. We also have nightlights for the elderly, or anybody that wants them. There's some back there, and if you require anymore, just let me know, give me a call. My business card is at the table.
Right, thank you very much. Sounds like a great program.
Thank you very much.
And one more thing. Is that your new boat out there?
Yes, it is.
I took a look at that. Very happy for you.
We put it out there for show and tell and just to show you where the money's going to.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
How often do you do the CPR training?
We set it up monthly. We could do it twice a month. They just have to call and schedule it, and we'll set it up for them.
Okay, so you don't wait till you have a certain amount of people and then everyone? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Great.
Next is one I just soon skipped, but I'm going to turn this one over to Clara, would you like to have this one, or?
I will. This is a certificate of completion to Mayor John B. Hendricks. Each year, they have an opportunity to attend the International Elected Official Institute. And this is his second one, which is his level two. And so the Florida League of Cities presented him with a certificate, and they asked that we honor him in a meeting, which we are happy to do so.
Yes.
And so this certificate of completion is for the I. E. M. O. Two Institute that he attended in Tampa on November twelfth, in the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And I was ready to go to number three.
Okay, now that I'm bright red. Okay, next is GFOA's Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Mr. Gomez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, by the way, everybody knows me, I'm Robin Gomez, city manager since December twentieth. I don't think I have a plaque out here yet, but we may be getting one soon. It's on its way. But good evening, everyone, and we're very proud to announce and to present that the city received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Up on the screen is just the letter that we received from GFOA, and I want to just recognize our finance director, Andrew Lafflin, and his staff for the great work in making sure that obviously we report all of our financial information as we are required, not just by Florida statutes, but clearly also by the government finance officers and generally accepted accounting principles throughout that we're required to follow. So, and news release, we were recognized, and Andrew, this is the twenty-thirds?
Twenty, yeah, I'll have to look it up, but the streak is long.
But it's been over twenty years that the city has been recognized for this achievement. We haven't actually received the certificate, but when we do, we will formally present it, but just wanted to provide this notice now. It's very exciting and great for the city to continue to receive this recognition. So thank you, Andrew and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, and the staff, the whole staff. I know they work hard. Next is one that I'm sure everyone knows is near and dear to my heart, and that's automated dry stack feasibility by Founders Three Real Estate Services. Gentlemen, if you'd like to step forward and give your presentation.
Thank you. My name is David Banky. I'm the CEO of Founders Three and F3 Marina.
Good afternoon. My name is John Matheson, president of F3 Marina. Alan's coming here.
Kind of the guy that runs our whole operation.
I'm the senior vice president for F3 Marina.
Well, I want to thank everyone, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing us to speak tonight. I thought I'd just start off by briefly giving a short explanation as to why we're here, what our purpose is. Back some time ago, something around a year ago, I read an article that was written by the mayor about his wish to see a dry stack here, and this is something we do. And we actually had been looking for another location for a dry stack on this coast. And so I contacted the mayor and the city manager at the time, and we went out here and visited the property and thought it was a great location. And since then, I know there was a study that was done that showed that it might be a little more challenging to accomplish, and we looked into it more, and we, our feeling is that we could have a very, very successful dry stack in the location of the city marina. So today, we thought we'd express our reasons why, just so you had another opinion and a different viewpoint about getting that done. So to start off here, David is going to talk a little bit about our company to start with.
So just to give you some background as to who we are, because we are from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, which is a little unusual, being here in Florida doing marina business. But our background is, we are real estate guys pure all the way through Chicago, Cleveland, Milwaukee. Some of us have places in New York. So we're just real estate guys that happen to be in the marina business, and we do it pretty well. So with that being said, we operate a number of different types of property, high-rise, residential, lower residential, industrial, office, retail, five million feet, five thousand apartments, and about, I don't know, five or six thousand marinas slips across the U.S. and internationally in Panama and Costa Rica. So we have some experience in doing what we do. So we're familiar with the marina business, we're familiar with developments, and we're familiar with making things work, because that's kind of our background. That's what we do for all of our clients. We help them make money. It's really what we end up doing successfully. So with that being said, if we could just turn the page. This is just a brief introduction of the marina that we built in Fort Lauderdale. So this was a very unique building. It's not what we are proposing here, but you get an idea of what can be done in a very tight site. This building happens to be one hundred and thirty feet high, which is way too high for here, and it is a system that's an overhead crane that basically runs the boats to and from specific slips within a four-minute timeframe. So retrieving the boats for minutes, coming back for minutes, and that is quietly and without pollution. It's also a hurricane-proof building. So it's, I think it's one seventy-eight, I think miles an hour is what it can handle. So one of those things that we did early on is we looked at this, we did the analysis, we studied it. We went through four years of pain trying to get this thing built. We finally got it through. Broward County is tough, very tough to deal with, but it's a successful project. It's right now about sixty percent occupied, and we've been open for three months. So it's going quick, and we're having a lot of interest in it. But just to give you an idea of what can be done here, as you see in the picture on the lower level, you get an idea of the overhead crane system just going up, and it actually can pick the boat up from the water. There's no forklifts, there's nothing that required, picks the boat up from the water and then delivers it man-free, without hands, basically by the press of a computer, much like when you get a Coca-Cola out of a vending machine, this boat basically gets it and puts it back for you. So it does it automatically. So what we are proposing here is something a little different, but along the same lines as pollution-free and noise-free, which is really, really important, especially being close to residential, anything else around here.
Industry trend, so we'd like to talk a little bit about the industry trends, is why a dry stack and what are the changes in relation to the size of the boats? So one, obviously, is the boats are getting larger. And how do we know this is that we have a very good relationship with all the big boat manufacturers. If you're looking at your boats, or especially the type of boats that we have in Florida, you can see that ten years ago, those boats were mainly outboard engines, fishing, fishing boats, very simple, but very concentrating on fishing. In today's trade or market, is more of an hybrid boat. It's four engines, heavy boats, larger, and it's a family boat. It's a fast boat, it's expensive boat, and is, it's used for, not just for fishing, but also to go intercostal or going across, across to other areas. So speaking with our boat manufacturers, we find out that today, some of the boats are getting to thirty, forty, even fifty feet. The other piece also in the trend is the demographics. So if you're looking at your typical wet slip marinas, the demographics is about fifty, sixty, seventy years old. The new generation are looking for different type of boats, number one. Number two is also, we noticed in our automated system, is that the majority of, I would say probably seventy percent of the population of the dry stack are out of states. So people have houses, they're from New York, Chicago, up north, and they have properties in Florida, but they want to be on the water. So again, the system with the dry stack is to be able to have those boats when they come down to Florida, and then when they leave, the boat is in a hurricane building, safe, and they don't have to worry about their boats. In term of the resale value, same thing. You don't have any anti-fouling paintings, the boats are clean, they're stored inside the dry stack, and they don't have to worry about it. So the trend is changing, demographic is changing. And as I mentioned, a lot of people are out of states, but having secondary properties here, and we know also there's a lot of people moving up north, moving now to Florida, and they want to be on the water. Another part of that is also is that if you're looking at the coast, and I'll take the example for Fort Lauderdale, for example, when you're looking at the marina, the wet slip, they were built in the forties. At that time, a fifty or sixty-foot boat was a large boat. So in order to, you can't stretch the cost, right? You have a water, you have your water plant, you can make it bigger. So one thing was to redesign the marina for vessel larger than fifty, anything from fifty and under going vertical. So now, what you do, you extend your water space, and you create more space for larger boats. So this was another aspect of the dry stack. If you're also looking at the dry stack that have been built currently, there have been, there are some are twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot, thirty-foot boats, and there is a big market again for the larger vessels, and those larger vessels are sitting outside. So again, in regard to the hurricane protection, again, having a boat in a hurricane-protected building, your insurance goes down, location is important as well. And again, the experience in the marina with the full service concierge is another aspect of the, again, of the trend. Vessel sizes, again, we do analysis, we do market study, and based on the market study, we evaluate the size of the dry stack and the ranch. So, any questions?
So I'm going to take it on from what Alan has been talking about. And before I do that, I want to clarify, even though we're based in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, I moved my permanent home to Pontegora earlier, late last year, I should say. So I'm a Florida resident now, and we've been spending a lot of time, as Dave said, for the last four years, getting Fort Lauderdale boat, and we do manage other marinas throughout the state, so we've known the market well. So just carrying on a little bit about what Alan was talking about, getting the right size of the boat, and we're talking a lot about that for a reason. Getting that right is critical. You have to know what your market is. Fort Lauderdale, the reason we built that marina in Fort Lauderdale, what Dave was describing, is because there's a lot of very big boats in Fort Lauderdale. It's a crazy market there, if you guys are familiar with it, but it's unique. You don't see many markets like that anywhere in the world like Fort Lauderdale. And we felt pretty strong, we had to accommodate boats up to forty-six feet there, and it's working. We're getting, as David mentioned, we're over half occupied, sixty percent occupied, and people are paying up to twenty-two hundred dollars a month for a slip. So the demand is there. I spent a lot of time trying to understand this market, Pinellas County. The deepest I can get to on statistics is to the county level. And the number you see up there is that there are sixty-eight, almost seven thousand boats that are between twenty-six feet and forty feet in Pinellas County. That's fourth of all sixty-seven counties in the state. Pinellas County ranks behind Deke County, Broward County, and I can't recall which the other county was, but Pinellas County is fourth place, and that's a pretty good ranking. That's a lot of boats in that size range. When you go over forty feet, it drops down to about a thousand boats. And the reason I showed that is what we're trying to demonstrate is you don't need to go larger, we feel, than forty feet to accommodate boats here. And that's an important distinction, because in the study that was done and presented here back a month or two ago, it talked about bringing up boats forty-five bringing up boats 45 feet or bigger. But to do so, it's, you do it at a cost, and it's a pretty high cost. As Dave was saying, we spent a lot of money building that Fort Lauderdale project. You don't need to do that here. The market just doesn't demand it, and it would be a big expense, and you're not going to see the return. So we felt that based on this market and the boats that are in this market, we felt that that's, that's the target you want to go for, and that's an important one to have, up to 40 feet, maybe 41, 41 feet. So next slide, please. So the other points we want to make is dry stacks in this market are all 100%, almost. Some of them are maybe in the mid-90s, but a lot of them have waiting lists that go for some time. So this is a tough market for boats. It's, and many of the, of the dry stacks in this market, they say they can handle a boat up to 35 feet, or maybe even up to 40. But that's probably just on the first level, and they can only handle a very small number of boats of that size. So if you have a 36 or 37-foot boat, there's a good chance you have nowhere to go with that boat. Rates are pushing high, so, and they could probably go higher, too. So that's my point is talking about, as far as size, very, very important. So go ahead to the next one. All right. So the other thing we want to make, a point of getting across with this type of a dry stack, when we talk automated, the one in Fort Lauderdale is fully automated, and Dave's going to talk a little bit about the one we're proposing for this market, it's what we would call a semi-automated dry stack. Still delivers a boat quickly, safely, quietly, eco-friendly, no forklifts, very high efficiency, and the ability to do things with that building, there's much more, many more options available. First level, you could do some different things other than boats with it. And if you see in that photo there, there's a unique entry system to get it out of the water on the lower right side, that will be picked up then by the automatic forks that will then put the boat away. So this, this system's about, what is it, about a quarter of the price of Fort Lauderdale? Yeah. So it's, it's, you get a lot for the money with this type of system. So Dave, you want to?
So as you can see in the lower right-hand slide, or, I'm sorry, the upper right-hand slide, right-hand picture, rather, right. This is a floor-mounted stacker crane system. So why is that important? It's important because when you have a traditional forklift, you can only take that boat up so high, right? So as you look at your traditional dry stacks, all the small bolts are on top, all the biggest bolts are on the bottom. So with our system in Fort Lauderdale, it was unique because we could take the biggest boat, 20 feet high, 30,000 pounds, and stick it all the way 130 feet in the air with it. This system doesn't quite do that, which is why it's much less expensive. This system, we can still get us a bigger boat up a good 60 feet in the air, which is about three or four different levels. So that's important, because that gives you the opportunity to have bigger boats in there, which means more money coming in for the revenue of the facility itself, right? So that's, that's a super important point. When we laid out this project, we just put it on a conceptual plan. So here, as you can see in the middle picture here, you're stacking five levels, and I think there's 258 boats in this particular facility. Like I said, it's just conceptual, this can change, this can be modified. Right now, it's 80 feet high, we can drop that down to figure out something that would be more conducive perhaps to the area. So there's a lot of different things we can do with it. But one thing I want to point out is that if, we got to have it somewhat larger, maybe not quite this large, but to at least have 200-some boats in it for it to make sense. Otherwise, it's not going to make any financial sense whatsoever. You won't, it does, you know, why, why even go through the exercise? And it won't be profitable either. It's just too expensive to build. So let's go to the next slide real quick. This, so it gives you another picture of the number of levels and the 258 boats. You can stack two in a bay and go through it, but it's a very simple building. It's not like Fort Lauderdale, what we built, this is much simpler. It can be very decorative looking on the outside, it can, it can fit within the landscape of where it is. It can be anything you want it to be. It doesn't have to be, you know, like you see some of these dry stacks where it's just like tin on the outside, it looks like a shed. We, you know, this is a city-owned marina, it should be nice, and we would propose something that would be more elegant in terms of where, where it's located next to the water. This is just, again, the layout of the mentions of this particular layout. We had, I think, 380 feet long by 138 feet wide by 80 feet high. So let's go to the next one. Total cost of this particular one is $16 million, $16.5 million. That's a conservative estimate. There's some, you know, there's a little bit of a fudge factor in here, and I wouldn't worry about the number right now either. There's ways to make that work in different ways to be creative with how that can be accomplished. So without focusing too much on that number, we can do that. For example, Fort Lauderdale, I think, was $46 million. So we figured that one out, that one's doing fine. This one is much less money, but it's in a lesser market per boat. But I think the numbers themselves still make sense, because they match up nicely. You're not getting 2,200 here, maybe you're getting six or seven or five, but you're not spending 45 million either, you're spending 16. So if you just do the simple math, it should work out, right? So I think this one would as well. We anticipate an 18-month lease-up schedule on this. So we've done that with the pro forma. We provided you a pro forma for that and did our best analysis of it. We took the operating expenses of our other marinas, looked at them, analyzed them, gave you our best shot at it, looked at all the development costs, considered everything with that, and gave our best shot at that, too, so that we could come up with a realistic number, not something that's just like, you know, puffy, we don't want to go out there and promise you something that we can't deliver. So this, this, this we can deliver. So if you go to the next slide, I think, yeah, I mean, the annual cash flow on it was two and a half million bucks. You know, annual revenues is 4.5.4 million. So as you can see, the thing begins to pay for itself. I think this one in particular had a 20-some percent return on investment, which is why I'm not worried about the $16 million. There's always ways to work around that. So as you go to the next one, this is way too hard to read, but it gives you the detail. We did the homework here for you to lay it out. I mean, this is from experts, we just got done building one. We do know what we're talking about, and this can be done here if it can be fit nicely in, and everyone would be happy of what could be built here. So without any question, we believe that this facility is a reality, it could actually be an exceptional part of your waterfront. And I think if you look at different things to do with this, you could, you could potentially incorporate the existing restaurant and ship store over there, you could incorporate that, you could lay it out differently, you could shorten it, heighten it, lengthen it, do a lot of different things to make it look like a wow factor here, of where people are like, oh, my God, you got to be kidding me, you know, that's fantastic, which is what we want to see. That was a big splash for Fort Lauderdale for us, was like changing the landscape of that city. And Mary Trontalis and Commissioner Sorenson were just elated of the final product that we did there. So I think we can do something similar here, maybe not as grand, but certainly as beautiful.
So. I'd like to throw out there that the project for Lauderdale is up for the Building of the Year Award that we're going to be at in March 10th, I think, right? So, so it's, point is, we think we can do a very nice facility that looks good, as well as performs well financially, and can add to revenue for the, for the city. So with that, any questions?
Is this something you would operate, or the city would operate?
That's a good question. What, there's different ways we can do this, but what, what our intent was for us to operate it. Now, it's worth mentioning, too, that the way we got us started in the marina business was operating city-run marinas around the country. That's what we did, and we still do. So we're very, very good at doing that. But if we're going to build it, we want to, you know, our intent would be to operate it and do either a joint venture, or we could do a lease situation, where we're paying a lease to the city. You know, we really didn't get into that kind of detail. Our purpose today was really to show you that this can work financially, how we schedule it, whatever the city needs, well, we could probably work something out.
Okay. And the lift, how does that work with catamarans and some of the strange step halls that we have now? And with so many motors in the back, it's, looks like a forklift can't even get to the boat.
Yeah. So the, the motors in the back aren't a problem. We're doing that right now. We're lifting up as, as many as five big engines on the back of a boat without a problem. The catamaran boats are another issue. We can handle them, but they require a custom bunk to be built at that boater's expense, which they're doing. And we can pick them up, but it's, it's, it's tricky, and we'd have to figure out how we can do it with this system. It's going to be a challenge, but in our system in Fort Lauderdale, we figured out how to do it. We'd have to see if we can do it with the system. I don't have a solid answer for that yet.
Okay. On your financial projection slide, when it says annual cash flow after stabilization, 2.5 million plus, is that profit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is almost rivaling our parking income that we covet so much. So if we were making 2.5 million a year, and it cost us, say it's, say it's 18 million, because I'm a realistic person, and I want the outside to be absolutely gorgeous. So, so that would be seven years to pay for itself, and then everything else would be?
With interest, you're probably looking at like 10, but yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's, so when we, when I put these numbers together with our staff, it was like, okay, this is going to make sense. But we knew right away it would, it would at the different level that it is compared to Fort Lauderdale, the numbers just line up right. So we anticipated the return to be where it's at. So it, the only difference between this one and Fort Lauderdale is it does require a little bit more labor, manual labor, because you do have to have someone to operate the actual lift itself, whereas in Fort Lauderdale, it's really a push of a button. So it's a little bit more expensive in terms of labor cost, but not much.
Yeah. You've been to our marina, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Where would this thing go? Like, straight ahead to the?
Great, great question. We need, so we would need to sit down with the city to figure that out, because you have the public works over there, you have some other land, you have other considerations with neighbors. There's many different factors that go in, and for us to come in here, yeah, for us to come in here and say we're going to pop it right here would be the wrong, although we did do some layouts, we, there's different things, you know, but we would have to sit down with you and say, okay, what could we do? And, you know, if you had a displaced like public works, what would that mean? I think incorporating into the building would not be something that you would want to do. So there might be another financial impact there about locations of sites and things like that. So there's, there's a lot of things to talk about here. But on the face of it, this, economically, this works for this area, very well, actually.
All for me.
Commissioner Hodges, have you got anything? Okay. Well, I've talked these guys years off for a year now, I guess. So I, Commissioner Andrews, are you still with us?
I am, sir.
Do you have any questions for these gentlemen?
No, I think this, this would be a good topic for a workshop. I think we can, we go through the numbers and kind of bang it out a little bit. I'd like to hear Andrew's opinion on it as far as financially how it works. But besides that, no, it was a great presentation. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public comment. Anyone that has public comment that is not on the agenda tonight, save that comment for when that item comes up. But if you have any comments, please step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Chuck Dillon, 529 Lilian Drive. At some point a while back, the mayor had brought up ideas about the parking at Caddy's and for the residents. And upon long thoughts and everything, Kitty Stewart had six residential parking stalls before. We've got all these new signs all over the parking, the streets. How about if we got our six parking stalls back? You could have the six parking stalls right on the south side, that there's six parking stalls, we could put in there, put some of our nice new signs, resident parking only. And I don't know whether or not, well, I know obviously this isn't the time to do it, but is to whether or not something could be brought up to make that possibly happen. Then that way, we get our resident parking back. And I understand that we can park anywhere there now, but good luck trying to get it. So, and finally, also, potentially a financial impact, because I do see that their parking is getting substantially higher. We're getting a lot of revenue from it. However, I think in, in, basically to get the citizens back to where we were before of those six parking stalls at Kitty Stewart, I think that's something that could be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bill Julian. I live at 407 South Bay Shore. I'm going to address that issue later on on the stop sign. But I have another traffic issue I just want to bring to your attention. Sure, we're all familiar with going westbound on Madeira Way. And once we go through the speed bumps into the crosswalk and what have you, and we all know that backs up on a consistent basis. If you're at the stoplight at Gulf Boulevard, and you would like to turn left, there's no left turn signal, and I believe you could put one there. If you're there next time, please look when you're stopped. There's a certain time where there's no green lights, and the only pedestrian, what do you call it, where they're allowed to cross, is from the east side of Gulf Boulevard to the west side, towards where that snack shack is, or whatever the name of it is. So while you're sitting there, you don't want to turn right, obviously, but we could turn left. There's no pedestrian allowed to cross in a crosswalks, there's no green lights. You're sitting there twiddling your thumbs, looking in your rearview, and you're watching them pile up back over that intersection, which is a whole nother issue, and back towards the other, you know, the rest of Madeira Way there. I mentioned this to someone that I voted for in the commission, and I don't remember who it was, the day before I voted, and even sent an email about it after the vote was tallied the last time we had a, had an election. And I was basically put off. I won't name any names or anything, but I just think it's something that should be looked at, and it's a safety hazard that's going on here in Madeira Way with that intersection there. Quite honestly, I think the speed bump probably shouldn't have been put there, should have been a stop sign, but maybe there's better ways of looking at it. But anyways, just a safety issue, and I think that we could get a lot of that traffic through if we had a left arrow there, and there's nothing that I've seen that would deter that. So I appreciate that if you would look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next is the consent agenda. Any issues on the consent agenda?
I saw no issues. I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Ordinance 2022-1, PD rezon of proposed schooner development, second reading and public hearing. Mr. Tryask, I believe you need to swear some people in and read this.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and read the ordinance by title only, first of all, to get us moving, and then I'm going to talk about the quadrature process and what you're going to do next. So this is Ordinance 2022-01, an ordinance to the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property generally described as 14,500 Gulf Boulevard, parcel number 0931-1587048000010. 14,550 Gulf Boulevard, parcel number 0931-1587048000020. 14,560 Gulf Boulevard, parcels 0931-1505929000010. 059290000100. Vacant lot to the west of 106, 145th Avenue East, parcel number 093115543060000030. Vacant lot to the south of 14,601 Gulf Boulevard, parcel number 093115870480000710. 106, 145th Avenue East, parcel number 093115543060000040. And 14,503 Gulf Boulevard, parcel 093115543060000020. From medium density, multi-family residential R3 or planned development PD, retail commercial C3 or planned development PD, and low-density multi-family residential R2 or planned, planned development PD, to planned development PD district providing for reading by title only and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022-01. I'm gonna go ahead and read the quasi judicial procedures that we're gonna use tonight. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Before I swear in any of the witnesses, I'd like to ask if there are any expartee communications or conflicts of interest that anyone on the commission wants to disclose.
No.
No.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and swear everyone in that's gonna speak on this particular gen item. If you could stand, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. Swear the testament about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you, everyone. So mayor, as a starting point, this is not a full-blown quasi judicial hearing. You've already had that. That was at the first hearing. This particular hearing would be for the purposes of determining whether are there any changes in the ordinance or staff recommendations since the first hearing. Um, and I'd also bring to your attention that there are two affected parties that have filed notices, and we're gonna need to address that first thing, determine whether or not they are affected parties. Wanna go through the list that I have received? We've received two notices of intent. One was filed by William Gay on January 28, 2022 at 12:10 PM, and Michael Burke on January 28, 2022 at 1:35 PM, or Mr. Gay and Mr. Burke here. Okay, sir. So is Mr. Gay here? Okay, since Mr. Gay is not here, we're gonna move forward. I um, is there any objection to Mr. Burke? Is there any objection to Mr. Gay if he appears sometime during this hearing?
Uh, yes, the applicant would object to Mr. Gay being determined as an affected party. He lives outside of the notice area, and the impact to him would not be any different or distinguishable from any other resident in the community.
Mr. Weber, do you represent Mr. Gay on this matter? Did you wanna address that?
Yeah, I do represent Mr. Gay.
Do you wanna step forward?
I don't necessarily disagree with what Ms. Cole just said, that he probably is outside the area of impact.
All right, thank you. So mayor, then you just need to make a determination to allow Mr. Burke to remain as an affected party so he can present evidence, cross-examine witnesses and so forth, and then also to find Mr. Gay is not an affected party. It would be your decision to make that, just like we did the last hearing.
Okay, all right, so, so I would agree. I know where Mr. Gay lives, and I know that he is not within the distance requirements to be an affected party. So um, I would say that Mr. Gay is not an affected party. I'm sorry, sir, what was your name?
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Burke, okay. Mr. Burke is an affected party. I believe you live catty corner from that in the.
Correct, sir. It's Black Oakina Condos, 14401.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we'll treat it that way. So um, you've got two different agenda items tonight. One is the PD rezoning and one is the um, development agreement. The PD zoning is quasi judicial, the development agreement is not, it's purely legislative. So we're gonna address right now this agenda item relative to the PD zoning. And as you know, under your rules, um, under the PD zoning, it's a quasi judicial hearing and requires um, the applicant to present first, followed by city staff, and then it'll be just the opposite when we get to the legislative act dealing with the development agreement.
Okay.
So Ms. Cole?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant JBB Schooner. Um, as Mr. Trask said at the last reading, hearing, which was first reading, the applicant presented significant testimony and provided that to you in both the form of oral testimony with its experts, as well as a PowerPoint that recapped each of those, uh, that testimony. It also, we also incorporated the application, the response to comments, and all of the communication with staff relative to this application as part of the record. So I'd first like um, to ask the commission to again incorporate the evidence that you received at the first reading, together with all of the evidence provided previously, um, into the record for tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Um, with that, we really don't wanna take too much of your time to recap each one of the criteria. Your code has a significant number of criteria in the code. Um, it addresses uh, very specific things such as landscaping, the width of a sidewalk, what the treatment is architecturally, and then it has the more obscure items that are more subjective, whether this is compliant with the comprehensive plan and generally the land development code of through both the testimony that was provided in the application presented by the applicant, together with the staff presentation uh, that you heard and its staff report, which is again in the record tonight. It is clear that this application meets those criteria for approval. Uh, the applicant went out of its way after it first submitted an application in October to further, to reduce the size of this property and the scope of this proposed redevelopment uh, from what was previously approved last summer. The applicant went further and modified that application uh, to present to you what you have for final reading tonight. The charge is that you weigh this evidence and make your decision if the evidence in the record supports your approval. Uh, we do have our team here. If you had additional questions, as Mr. Trask said, and as your code states in section two of your ordinances, quasi judicial hearing does allow the applicant to present additional evidence after uh, any other folks speak tonight. And so if necessary, we will certainly offer that. But we appreciate your continued support, uh, that both the staff has recommended approval, the planning commission unanimously recommended your approval, and of course, this commission uh, voted five to nothing and unanimously approved this project on first reading. And we uh, appreciate that and look forward uh, to moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now it'd be staff presentation.
There have been no changes in the concept plan or staff's recommendation from the last hearing on January 12, 2022. The applicant originally submitted plans showing floors three through seven, which were removed in the last few revisions as they were not required for the concept review. The applicant provided plans on floor levels three through seven to reflect the updated concept plan and to support the full review process. Please find on the dais a copy of these two updated sheets as an exhibit for ordinance 2022-01, along with copies of the concept plan that were provided to you on January 12, and a copy of staff's presentation for the rezoning only. The copy of this presentation is very similar to the one that you heard on January 12 with the redevelopment application slides omitted. Staff would like to record the additional floor plan sheets for levels three through seven, the rezoning presentation, um, the CVs of Linda Portal and me, Jennifer Rowan, and the staff report into the record as an exhibit.
Okay, so mayor, the question, they are submitting all of these items into evidence, and you have to make a decision whether you're going to accept them in evidence?
Okay, yes, I do accept them.
City staff, have anything else?
That is all.
So Ms. Cole, do you have any questions of city staff?
Just for, uh, just one, sir. Uh, just to clarify that the floor plans uh, were incorporated in your review and you had seen those, and they were not, they simply were not incorporated into the most recent submittal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weber, do you have any questions of city staff?
Good evening, Timothy Weber, the law firm of Weber, Crab and Ween, here on behalf of Mr. Burke. Ms. Rowan, so the submittals that were just brought forth would be the floor plans for three through seven on the hotel. Have those been made available to the public at any time before now?
Uh, not the current design. There were previous um, submittals of the concept plan that had the floor plans, but this submittal that, that we have today on the dais was not.
The plans that are on the city's website that people are told to consult before tonight's hearing do not include those plans for floors three through seven, correct?
Correct. We received these plans today.
Um, do those plans depict the floor area of each of the rooms and the gross floor area of floors three through seven?
Yes, they do. They have the dimensions of each room and the square footage of each room.
Is there any explanation why those plans were not submitted previously?
Um, because they were not in the um, original, they were in the original concept plan, but since there were some minor revisions to the concept plan, they were, they were left out.
What is the gross floor area depicted on the plans on floors three through seven?
We have the, just the square footage of each individual room, um, and you can see the total gross floor area on the concept plan, page ASP1.
All right, so the plan that you have for floors three through seven depict just the individual rooms and not the entire gross floor area?
The entire gross floor area is shown on ASP1 in the concept plan.
All right. Have you done an analysis as to whether the amount set forth on ASP1 matches the plans that you received today?
Uh, this will be reviewed further in the site plan process to assure that they are within their FAR, they're allowed FAR that they are requesting.
All right, so you have not reviewed those for purposes of tonight's approval?
Correct.
I'm looking at the data table that you gave regarding the FAR, and it indicates that the gross floor area on the west lot is 55,177.35. Are you familiar with that number?
It says the gross floor area on the west lot that is depicted on ASP1.
Is that 55,177.35?
Yes.
All right, so why in your FAR calculation do you use the number 53,822.01?
Where do you see this 53,000?
In your FAR data sheet for the west lot, you use a total gross floor area of 53,822.01. When in fact, your data sheet says it's 55,177.
Um, yes, those two numbers are different. There are certain areas that are not included in the floor area count, and we would just need to review that. But the applicant would not be allowed to, if this passed, uh, the applicant would not be allowed to um, have an FAR of over 1.17 regardless.
All right, well, can you tell us what areas of the 55,177.35 would not be included in your FAR calculation?
I do not have that in front of me, but I do have the definition of floor area, how our code defines it, um, which I can read off to you in just a minute.
Was it sufficient to say that you're not aware, as you sit here today, what the difference is?
Um, correct, I do not have that in front of me. So the floor area ratio is a ratio of square footage of, square footage of gross area divided by the square footage of land area. The footage, square footage of land area for purposes of determining the FAR, which is floor area ratio, shall not include public right roads right of way and shall not include submerged lands. And our definition of floor area gross means the sum of all enclosed areas of floors on a building measured from the outside faces of the exterior walls or from the center lines of a wall separating two buildings, including halls, lobbies, arcades, stairways, elevator shafts and balconies, but not including interior parking spaces, open terraces, patios, atriums, entryways, loading spaces for motor vehicles, and any space where floor-to-ceiling height is less than six feet.
And do you know whether the difference in FAR in these two tables between the gross floor area table and the FAR data sheet is attributable to anything on that list?
Um, I do not have that information in front of me.
Um, let's just talk briefly about the density. Without this redevelopment plan, what would be the allowable density? Um, if you use density intensity averaging for the east and west lots?
So without the redevelopment plan, um, or redevelopment, um, R2, that R2 lot, the RM lot, they could have one unit. Instead of two, they're asking for, I mean, um, three, sorry about that. They're asking for a redevelopment of three residential units. If they did not have that redevelopment plan, it would be allowed one unit. On the ROR lots or the formerly um, C3 or PD lots, they were allowed 22 temporary units. They're not asking for redevelopment, or they did not ask for redevelopment on that lot. And the RFM lots, those are west of Gulf Boulevard, they could have 27 temporary units without the redevelopment. And with the redevelopment, they are asking, or they were asking 31 units. With the redevelopment, they are asking, or they were asking 31 units.
And how do you get to the 27 on the west lots? I believe your staff report said 20?
I would have to look that up. My scratch note says 27 temporary units, so I would just need to look that up again.
That's 0.46 acres at 45 units an acre, correct, on the west lots?
Since this is one site, the site is larger than one acre, therefore, they, they could request the 60 temporary lodging units per acre, or 18 residential units per acre.
Well, if you're averaging the density and intensity, wouldn't you average what was on the west slots without regard to the entire site, since you're averaging it with the density on the other side?
So the, the site as a total is, is 1.1. So we look at the site as a total when calculating that density.
All right, but even as, as to your calculation of what's available on the west, the total density without the redevelopment would be approximately 50 units?
I would need to add all of those numbers together, which I don't have in front of me.
22.
But it's.
One, and.
It would be less, it'd be less than what they're, they're asking for.
The staff report does not include any analysis of the average height of the surrounding buildings. Has the city done any analysis, and how did the city arrive at an average height of the surrounding buildings consummate with this project?
Thank you, Linda Portal. The PD ordinance allows the calculation of density and height, or height particularly differently based on the circumstances. It requires that when looking at the, they can do a minimum or an average of heights on surrounding properties that are of the same zoning and use. There are no immediately surrounding properties that are designated as PD and in use as hotel. If we expand that out to look at what other uses of that type, even if they're not immediately surrounding, we get a list of hotels and that are designated as PD that are in the neighborhood of seven or eight stories. But because those are not surrounding, we opted to go with the second recommendation, which allows the commission to consider, consider in light of the voluntary provision of civic or community enhancements that you can provide additional height as you see fit. It includes the ground floor retail, expanded setbacks, enhanced landscaping, and other design enhancements that are furthering the policies and strategies of the comprehensive plan. That is the recommendation that we based our analysis on, because that is an option to you, and because this project did provide some of those enhancements.
So Ms. Portal, let me see if I understand this correctly. You didn't calculate an average height to compare this project to, you just granted additional height?
We, there are no immediately surrounding properties in the same zoning and of the same use, which is the definition explained or required in the PD.
Well, there were immediate surrounding properties of the same zoning as the existing zoning on this, correct?
But not in the proposed zoning, and this is a PD proposal. So these are the, you, you are obligated to find if there are other properties similarly zoned to the PD as requested, otherwise there would be no point in that review with it.
What list of PD projects could I come up with that gives me an average height of eight stories in this city?
There are several hotels that have been approved or built that are also PDs, including those lots in the town center, which are approved at levels of eight floors. The Madeira Bay, which is also approved at a level of eight floors. There are, the Barefoot Beach, which has seven stories, and the rest are condos. We don't have a lot of PD hotels here in town, but those that we do have are either seven or eight stories.
The hotels that are in the R3, or motels that are in the R3 in the vicinity of this particular project, are there any over three stories?
No, but we're not requesting an R3 here, we're requesting a PD, and so you would be looking to compare it to other PDs and hotel use.
So you disregarded all properties that had the same zoning as the underlying zoning because PD was requested here?
If we were building in accordance with the underlying zoning, there'd be no need for this analysis.
How far away is the closest hotel that you used in your average to justify the height on this building?
The Hotel B at eight floors is 1,500 feet from the schooner.
That's the Madeira Beach Town Center project?
Correct.
And that's on 150th?
That's correct, because there are no surrounding properties in the same zoning and of the same use. And because the city commission has the option of using more than one means of calculating height.
Doesn't your code really say that you can have additional stories above the underlying zoning's height limitation based on the provision of civic enhancements, expanded setbacks, et cetera?
Correct, because if we weren't going over the existing zoning, there'd be no need for this request.
Right, but your PD code says at a maximum, be designed to reflect the average intensity, height, and massing of the development pattern on surrounding property of similar zoning and use. You're not treating the average as a maximum here?
No, because we don't have any similar zoning or uses surrounding that property. You have to go beyond that.
I don't have any other questions of staff.
Mr. Weber, do you have any witnesses that you wanted to call, any defendants?
Mr. Burke, I'm not sure it's my turn yet, but.
It is your turn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will call Mr. Burke then.
To Mr. Weber's point, I would have some questions to redirect from his cross.
You want to do the redirect now? Okay, let's go ahead and do that then. Then Mr. Weber's going to follow that with his, his case in chief.
Thank you. Don't worry, I'm not going to ask you to do math, Ms. Rowan. How many times would you say you met with the applicant's architect or the applicant's team since the original approval of the PD in July?
At least six or seven meetings.
And at one of those meetings, did you and the applicant's architect sit with the floor plans and highlight and go redline what is included in gross floor area as compared to what's included in floor area ratio?
Yes, and we've had this discussion multiple times, but there was one meeting that we sat together and looked at the plans and highlighted, looking at gross floor area.
So do you feel as though in your review, you sufficiently calculated and accepted the numbers that were presented as the distinguish between gross floor area and floor area ratio?
Yes.
And relative to floors three through seven, was originally submitted a plan for floors three through seven, which had a larger gross floor area and floor area ratio?
I believe so. I don't have that in front of me, but I believe those were larger than what is submitted today.
And based on the plans that were submitted in October compared to what is being requested to be approved today, was that a reduction in the floor area ratio?
Absolutely, and there was a floor reduction as well.
So can we presume that levels three through seven have a reduced number of square footage and to overall FAR based on the plans that you've seen with the gross floor area?
Yes, I would assume so. I have not looked at both submittals side by side, but I would assume so.
Is one of the criteria for approval for this commission to have access to and review all of the staff's calculations?
No.
Thank you. I have one more question. I've just handed Ms. Rowan a packet that has a variety of different buildings and heights. Have you seen this package before?
This was emailed to me today, earlier today.
And did you and I discuss these examples?
Yes, we briefly discussed these examples.
And through the past six months, are these similar examples that Ms. Portal and you and the applicant and the applicant's team have discussed on a regular basis relative to what height would be appropriate on this site?
Yes, and it did not include the, the approval of the Hotel A and Hotel B in the Town Center project, but everything else, yes, we have discussed.
Very good. Thank you.
Are you tendering that? So mayor, you need to determine whether or not you're going to receive that packet into, into the record that's being handed out?
Yes, we will receive this into the packet. Thank you.
Ms. Cole, are you done with your questions then? Kate, are you done? Okay. Mr. Weber?
My client, Mike Burke, he was previously sworn. Sir, would you state your address for the record, please?
Excuse me, Unit 204, 14401 Gulf Boulevard, Madeira Beach.
All right. I'm going to show you a compilation of spreadsheets that contain building heights for surrounding buildings on Gulf Boulevard and in the immediately surrounding area, and ask you if you're familiar with this particular.
Yes, I am.
All right, and if you would, would you explain to the commission what you did to determine the building heights in the surrounding area?
Well, I, I walked around and counted the number of floors. I had the, the list of, of properties which we had obtained from the assessment department. I figured out which, by the address, exactly which building was which. I counted the number of stories, and in one or two cases, made a correction to, to reflect what I saw, so that this was based on my observations.
All right, so if I understand you correctly, you obtained the property data from the property appraiser's office, and then visually verified the height of the buildings?
That's correct, based on the number of stories.
All right, and so let's start with the first sheet. The height of the buildings on Gulf Boulevard between 143rd and 147, what was the average height of the buildings on Gulf Boulevard in that area?
The average height was 2.2 stories. You can see on the first page, anywhere from one story to four stories to the La Coquina Building I'm in, up to a high of six stories for the Berry Dam and the Sea View Condos.
All right.
The rest of them are one and two stories.
And if I could call your attention to the second page of that exhibit, this would be the height of the buildings on 144th Avenue. What was the mean height of the buildings on 144th Avenue?
Mean height was 1.3, number of stories, these are all low-density developments.
All right. What about 145th Avenue? What was the mean height on 145th Avenue?
Mean height was also 1.3, mixture of two-story and one-story buildings.
All right, and how about 146th Avenue? What was the mean height of the buildings on 146th Avenue?
Again, 1.2 stories, triplexes, single families, duplexes, nothing any higher.
And finally, 147th Avenue, what was the mean height of the buildings on 147th Avenue?
1.1 stories. The only one higher than one story was a six-unit condo that's two stories.
I may approach, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. So received. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, you live in this neighborhood. Is an eight-story building consistent with the surrounding buildings in that area?
I don't see how it could possibly be consistent. The maximum height along the west side of Gulf Boulevard is six stories until you get five large apartment buildings away before you get to the Ocean Sands condos that are at 150th. Anything across the street is two stories, and our building is four stories. We're the, we're the high building on the east side of Gulf. But there's really not, there's nothing higher than five stories in anything that I would consider surrounding property or that, that one could take a reasonable view of surrounding property being anything beside the, either beside the, the applicant property or within the notice area of the applicant property, or in any general view of the property.
All right, I didn't have any other further questions, but if you had anything you wanted to add to this commission at this point in time, that would be your opportunity.
Okay, Mr. Burke, if you can just hang on just a second then. Ms. Cole, do you have any questions for Mr. Burke?
Thank you. Can you identify on your spreadsheet which of those parcels have a planned development zoning, please?
I don't think I can. I only have the address and the name of the, of the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber, do you have any other witnesses that you wanted to call?
No other witnesses, but I would ask to be admitted into the record the transcript of the July 14th, 2021 schooner approval.
I would object to that. That's a separate application that has no bearing on this quasi-judicial hearing. This is a new application that was submitted. There was a lawsuit pending, which Mr. Weber is intimately aware of, that is stayed in consideration for this approval, which would obviate the July approval that you have in the event this is approved on second reading.
In response to that, there is no approval tonight that would obviate your July 14th, 2021 approval or the litigation. You'll be asked later to consider a development agreement that if for any reason what you approve tonight were invalidated, that it would place these two parties back into the exact same position they occupied before tonight's vote, which would be the current pending litigation on the July 14th, 2021 approval. That approval demonstrates, and it's already been referred to tonight by the applicant themselves about, you guys voted on this project in July, and I think it's totally appropriate to see the course of the approval of this project and the course of this commission's consideration of this project, and to have an adequate and complete record for all parties concerned, concerning how that's been handled.
So, Mr. Mayor, you need to act upon that, whether or not that you're going to allow that. It was a separate application. My advice to you, under your Section 2-8A of your rules of procedure or of the code, it says any motions or objections made by a party- it says, "Any motions or objections made by a party may be referred to the city attorney for an advisory ruling. The presiding officer shall act on behalf of the board and shall respond to motions and other matters with the assistance of the city attorney." My advice to you is that it should not be included because it is a separate application and that application should stand on its own. It has nothing to do with this current application.
That's, I agree. So it's denied.
Thank you with that.
Thank you.
I just have argument you want to?
We can do the public first and then we'll close up with arguments. Okay. So is there anyone else in the public that would like to step forward and address the commission on this application? If so, if you could stand up, come to the podium. Anybody else that wants to speak? Yes, you can speak. The public has, all right, why don't you step forward? I'm going to go ahead and swear you in. Were you sworn in earlier? Okay, if you could just raise your right hand and be sworn in. Swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, why don't you state your name, please? Make any presentation you want. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jean Farnin. I live at 574 Johns Pass Avenue. And I became interested in this project because things looked, did not look right to me when the height and the density and the danger of people having to cross all these lanes of traffic. And you're talking about pedestrian lanes that are, you know, and it's going to be traffic going north and south at the same time on both sides of the road. And then you have a five-lane highway. And then you have the bicycle lanes where you actually have the bicyclists going against traffic. So it looks to me like a nightmare. So I did go to the neighborhood meeting that was in November, I believe. And there were a lot of things that were said and that are in the transcript of that meeting that are very shocking. Basically, Ms. Cole here, throughout the meeting, kept saying how that this was already approved. This was already approved for the nine stories. The architect was asked specifically on the height of the parking garage, and it's in the transcript, it's 37 feet, when in fact somehow it has grown another 20 feet or so. I don't believe it's transparency at all. And I just think that our planning staff, for whatever reason, whether they're understaffed, they're under pressure by the Board of Commissioners, by the applicant, that they're not looking at what's going forward for our community, for what's best for our community. The beauty of our PD is that it's not like Treasure Island where you have a specific maximum height. It's to go to the average of the surrounding properties. But based on what was said in the transcript of the neighborhood meeting, you know, it's, you know, based on your interpretation, I think that the planning department should be working for the city of Madeira Beach and not the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. So I'm going to go back to city staff first and then Mr. Weber and let the applicant finish up. Any closing comments that city staff would like to make? Okay. All right, Mr. Weber, now's your opportunity and then we'll let the applicant go last.
Thank you. So you're probably wondering why you just keep voting and voting and voting on this project. And there's a pretty simple answer why you keep voting on this project is every time it's brought before you, it does not comply with your code. Yet you're repeatedly assured by this applicant that they meet all the requirements of your code and you're repeatedly assured by your staff that you meet all the requirements of your code. And if you had met all the requirements of your code and we were here in July and I said you don't meet all the requirements of your code, we wouldn't be here again with a complete start over doing this again. But here we are for, I think it's going on the fourth approval or attempted approval of this project. Each time this applicant brings something to you that's unapprovable. And I would ask you to heed the advice of Mr. Trask that where there is not competent substantial evidence to show that the applicant meets all the requirements, you are required by law in this quasi judicial proceeding to vote no. So let's talk about that for a moment. Your city staff tells you that without a redevelopment plan, your maximum density on this project is 27 units on the western parcel, 22 units on the eastern parcel and one unit on the R2 lot for a total of 50. You're being asked to approve a project with 56. How do they get there? Well, they take a provision of your code, which was intended to allow like a mom-and-pop motel that wanted to refurbish on their site. They could build to the same height and density in the same footprint, with the same setbacks, at the same height, and with compliance with that underlying zoning code to the maximum extent possible. That's what your redevelopment code is for, is to allow people to take an old building and to rebuild on that lot at the same height and density and with the same setbacks and with the same provisos. But that's not what this developer is trying to do. They're trying to take a redevelopment application, say, well, we can just grandfather that density and then transfer it across Gulf Boulevard, aggregate it onto a site that's already non-conforming and to create a PD monstrosity that is multiple times the allowable density on that property under the guise of a redevelopment plan. And unfortunately, that's not legal and that's not what your code provides. And to take the Chinese buffet approach of land use approval and to say, we're going to take a little bit from this process and a little bit from that process. And let's talk about how they did that. They have apples and oranges here. Your redevelopment ordinance specifically tells you that you have to have a complete site plan under Article 2 to approve a redevelopment. Yet they come in and say, well, PD allows us to come in on a concept plan, which we're still having pieces of it trickle in tonight. And so they come in and they say, well, we can just come in on a concept plan, enter in a development agreement and prove all that later. Yet your redevelopment ordinance says you have to have a complete site plan at the time that you do that. Again, I was here in July pointing out that we're not requiring this applicant to give us a complete site plan in the PD process. And again, we have plans that don't have the landscaping, which we pointed out to them. We filed a lawsuit pointing it out to the applicant in the city. Where are the picture of the mature trees of what they're going to look like in five years? Where are there even elevations of the north, south or east side of the building on the eastern lots? They don't even have three of the elevations of the buildings, let alone the landscape plans and to show the landscape at the height it's supposed to be in five years. And the non-conformities and the failure to comply with your code goes on and on and on. We've never been able to verify the FAR calculations because three through seven floors first show up tonight. Still haven't seen a copy of them. Your PD zoning code has a process. It is intended to allow you to do some creative things, but this takes creativity well beyond the pale of what is permitted under your code. And your code, they're misreading it and your city staff is misreading it. Ms. Portal told you exactly what their interpretation was, that additional stories can be considered for community enhancement. But let's read the exact language of the code because language is important. It says, "Additional stories above the limitations of the underlying conventional or PD zoning district at the time the application for PD is officially sufficient may be considered in light of voluntary provision of civic or community enhancements." So the provision for additional stories is to get you above what the underlying zoning on the property was before. But then your code says PD development must, at a maximum, be designed to reflect the average intensity, height, enassing of the development pattern on surrounding property of similar zoning and use. Your staff says that the additional stories provision allows you to put additional stories above the maximum of the average, above the average. So we can go above the average of what the surrounding properties are for civic or community enhancements. That's what they've brought you. That's what Ms. Portal just told you. They're looking at that as a process, which means there is no maximum. You can simply find out, well, there's enhanced setbacks or there's first floor retail or there's some other benefit to the city. There is no maximum under the interpretation given to you by your staff and given to you by this applicant. Yet your code says the additional stories can be considered above what the underlying zoning was, but at a maximum must. I don't know what at a maximum must means, but I would submit to you, it doesn't mean there is no maximum. Now, consider the evidence. What did they bring you as averages? Not in any of the application packets, not in any of the submittals prior to all of the staff recommendations and votes you've taken telling you this property was compliant. We get for the first time tonight a compilation of photographs that they say supports the average height. 13070, the All Seasons Report, how close is that? 13101, 13220, Madeira Bay, 13336 Gulf Boulevard, 13440, 13500, 13600, 13650, 13720. And of course, this is the applicant's evidence, but they don't tell you anything about zoning or use of these, which would be what they'll suggest is necessary here. And then we hear about the Cambria and about buildings up at 150th. But what about this area of your city? Is this area of your city not worth making sure that development is compatible with this area of your city? Are the people who live between 143rd and 147 not entitled to expect that this commission would hold any PD project to a reasonable height given that area? Because that area is exactly as Mr. Burke testified and presented. They're all one-two-story buildings with a four-story condo here and a six-story condo there. And so you are going to create a area of your city where everything is low-density in one big 105-foot building and then back to the low-density. That's not what the maximum in your PD zoning code is supposed to do. So how did we get here? Well, we got here because we were trying to get more density than would be allowed on these parcels. Still have some disagreements with the FAR calculations. But more intense use of these parcels than was permitted in the underlying zoning. More density, more height. Where are the setbacks? The setbacks on this property are egregious and they're nowhere near the setbacks of the underlying zoning. They're nowhere near the setbacks required in your code. On the eastern lot, you have a five-foot setback on Gulf Boulevard. So however well-intentioned the applicant is and however much they think this would be a nice project and to put it in your city, it's still their burden to bring you a project that you can approve and that's approvable and that's legal. And you have an obligation as commissioners to make sure that not only does it meet the requirements of your code, but also that it's compatible with the surrounding area. And this, I would submit, is not compatible under any view. Again, the redevelopment sleight of hand to get 31 units out of a property that's only 27, to get three units out of a property that is only one and then not even build those in accordance with your redevelopment code, but to try to transfer those as if they're mobile entitlements. That's just completely illegal and the density is illegal and the height is illegal. The setbacks are illegal. And again, we still don't even have it a complete application. I would ask you to vote this down tonight. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Did you want to make a closing argument, presentation?
Thank you. Mr. Weber is here again. Not surprising that despite all of the lawsuits, development continues in Madeira Beach. This commission and the staff diligently reviews the code, reviews the applications that are submitted. You heard Ms. Rowan testify that she had no less than six meetings between November and now with the applicant and the architect reviewing specific criteria and numbers to ensure that what they were testifying to in their staff report met the criteria and your expectations. The code outlines opportunities. The comprehensive plan gives us the framework and the goals and policies and objectives that you all have set forth as part of this community to follow. Inherently in that comprehensive plan, it discusses moving tourist activities to west of Gulf Boulevard and intensifying development there to retain the single-family neighborhoods to the east of Gulf Boulevard. The city amended its planned development code recently to be very specific about what was expected of applicants. And this application meets those criteria. The staff has reviewed each criteria and presented that evidence to you, as has the applicant. The criteria does not include whether somebody likes or dislikes the project. And it certainly doesn't include whether it's just simply too high. And in fact, the code that Mr. Weber said not only talks about the underlying zoning district for height, but he conveniently left out the words "or" the planned development and PD, which is what this is. That's what your code says. In PDs, you have the ability to increase the height over what otherwise would be permitted based on the public benefit that's offered to you. This is a project that had no retail on the first floor and the city staff said to support additional height, you need to offer a public benefit. The first-floor retail, parking, that is publicly accessible, the landscaping on 104th and 146, the sidewalks, the coordination with FDOT. These are all public benefits that you have been presented and that you've been considered. These are objective criteria regarding the proposed use in the designs. And the applicant has shown that its request is consistent with the plan and has complied procedurally. Section 2-10 of your code in the quasi judicial talks about rezonings. And it talks about, once the applicant has established that it's met those criteria, that opponent has to show that retaining the existing zoning accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. So based on that, is the legitimate public purpose that the zoning on the west side of Gulf Boulevard is appropriate, limiting the redevelopment opportunities that might be there? Or rather, looking at the goals, objectives and policies of your comprehensive plan and how to encourage your tourist activity while retaining your single-family home and residential neighborhood? You have weighed the evidence, the staff analysis that has been significant. I personally have been involved in no less than four meetings with staff and know that there have been many more absent my attendance. The planning commission weighed the evidence. And this commission, all unanimously determined that this application meets the criteria and meets the goals, policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan. We would respectfully request that this commission maintain its support and approval of this application and allow this planned development to proceed consistent with your code and the opportunities that are presented therein. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, it's back to the commission now for a motion and consideration of this application.
Okay, is there a motion on 2022-01?
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 2022-01, the PD rezoning of the proposed. 2022-01, the PD rezoning of the proposed schooner development project.
Just for a second.
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Oh, aren't we going to discuss it?
Okay.
I'd like to explain why I made the motion, for instance. It won't take me long.
Knock yourself out.
There's a lot of misinformation out there about how we develop property in this town, and I just want to give a quick thumbnail on it, because a lot of us are being accused of making illegal decisions up here. If you own a piece of property, some commercial property in Madeira Beach on one of our main corridors, you've got three options if you want to develop it. You can just construct a building that's within the side setbacks and the height, and it can be the ugliest building in the world, and the city can't do anything about it, right? You're within the code. There's no oversight by our planning commission. Certainly, none of us get involved. You're allowed to build what you're allowed to build. It could be horrible. Second thing you could do, you could build a building that's a little wider or a little taller and ask for a variance. And in that case, a magistrate would go forward, make the decision, and you'd have to meet about eight criteria that are very difficult, frankly, to get. And that, again, no oversight by the planning commission, no oversight by us, just the community planning department of the city would be involved in that. Or number three, which is what we're talking about here, which is the PD process or the planned development process. This allows you to build a building that's a little wider and taller, and it's assessed by just about everybody, obviously staff multiple, multiple, multiple times. It's looked at by our planning commission, which are eight people who volunteer for that position in the city and look at it, and then they go on and give us a recommendation, which we can accept or not. And obviously, we look through this, you know, a lot. Using the planned development ordinance, you individually look at how that property is going to be developed, and you look at the location and the lot size and the current and the proposed use and the similar buildings, frankly, if there are any. Part of this process determines that there's even infrastructure to support the project, and if there isn't, the developer must put it in, and that's happening here. In this particular project, I kind of like the PD process, because not only is the citizens involved, our planning commission is involved with the volunteers, we're involved in what's going to go up in our city. It's good because we get some creativity, and we get to be a little dramatic, and we get benefits to the city. This is a negotiation that the city has with the people developing. And I can tell you, in this particular case, we're getting some good stuff, in my opinion. The owner gave us a park about the size of a lot for us to use for green space, or we can develop it into a park if we wish. The owner in this case must re-mill and resurface 144th Avenue and 145th Avenue and put in new sidewalks. The owner must do its own undergrounding of utilities. The owner must increase the landscaping over and above what is required by choice number one and choice number two. And they're required to build a row of retail spaces across the street from the hotel, which will make our Gulf Boulevard, you know, it's the walkability factor. Instead of now walking by an empty lot, now you're going to walk by some storefronts, and we're going to have some additional parking over there. You know, I look at these pictures and I've seen the plans. The Schooner Hotel is no taller than Madeira Bay, for instance, which is in my neighborhood. I mean, I'm fine with it. We're living on the beach. Tourism is extremely important to this town, right? Our identity is with some tourism and a lot of income with the tourism and the taxes we're going to get from this project. I don't know, it excites me. And it also cleans up that crazy system where we have 17 cars pulling out backwards onto Gulf Boulevard, right? Trying to get in and out of the schooner because their parking lot is so poorly designed. So all this is going to be taken care of, and I'll get off my soapbox now, but there's no changes from the last time we all approved this unanimously. The planning commission approved it unanimously and voted to have us vote for it. I think it meets all the criteria that was set out. You know, to me, personally, I trust our community planning people to get it right, and I know they've worked hard on this. So I don't know. I just think standing up here saying what we're doing is illegal is a conclusion that someone made that's incorrect. And for me, just to let you guys know, I'm voting for this project. I wouldn't have made the motion if I didn't think it was right from Madeira Beach.
Well, go ahead, Dave. I'll go next.
Mr. Trask, are we allowed to ask questions?
We're done at this point. So, I mean, if you want to open up the hearing again to allow additional testimony that would allow for cross-examination by all the parties and so forth, so I would advise against that. But if you want to do it, we have to have Ms. Cole be able to cross-examine and Mr. Weber as well.
Okay, I'll pass.
Okay.
I have a question. I just wanted to make a remark about I know these people, and the work that they've done here in the city has been fantastic. I don't believe that they would do something that would actually hurt the city or damage the city in any way. I feel like their moves are great. I feel confident that they know what they're doing. And like the vice mayor did indicate, a lot of the different obstacles she had and the things that they're doing, you know, it's all a benefit here to the city, so it's not hurting anything there. So, you know, I think they're in favor, you know, I'm with them.
You know, Madeira Beach has some of the lowest avalorum taxes in the county. If you like keeping your avalorum taxes low, then you need to generate new forms of revenue. If you want to see your avalorum taxes start going up and up, because we've got a lot of infrastructure to replace in this city. If you want to see your taxes going up, then you fight things that will move this city forward. I don't know about you folks, but I like my taxes being low, and this city needs to generate revenue. And it doesn't matter whether the building is seven stories. If it's seven stories, true, you can't see over it. If it's five stories, you can't see over it. If it's three stories, you can't see over it. And if it's one story, you can't see over it. And these guys, I think, have come back to us, made a lot of changes, and have got a beautiful concept drawing here. So that's all I have to say. You know, if you want your taxes to go up, fight these developments. Anyone else? Do I need to open this up for public comment? Okay.
All right. Done.
Good. City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Development Agreement, JJB Property Holdings LLC and Selinky Rentals LLC.
So, it's a staff presentation item.
Okay.
Just a reminder, this is a purely legislative question. It is not quasi-judicial. The public will have an opportunity to speak, though. It is a public hearing.
This is the presentation for the schooner development agreement. Here is a Google map reflecting the location and the lots involved with this development agreement.
Jenny, can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the development agreement? The development agreement is a legally binding contract, which is authorized by the state statute and the city of Madeira Beach's Code of Ordinances between a property owner or developer and a local government, often including terms not otherwise required through existing regulations. These agreements can specify various elements of the development process. To establish a development agreement, the developer and the local governments both work with legal counsel to develop and execute a contract that binds all parties. The development agreement provides assurances to the developer that the development regulations that apply to the project will not change during the term of this agreement. The city may require conditions to mitigate project impacts, as well as clarification about project phasing and public improvements. This is the beachside site plan and the east side site plan. The notice requirements are found in Florida statutes 163, 3225, and also in the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, section 86, 144. All of these requirements have been met. This is a slide showing the posting, the Tampa Bay Times advertising affidavit. So in section 86-145 in Florida statutes 163, 3227, has a list of requirements for a development agreement, so I'll go through each and every one of those. So, number one, a legal description of the land subject to the agreement and the names of its legal and equitable owners. The legal description is in Exhibit A. This is pages 16 and 17 of the development agreement and pages 251 and 252 of your packet. The legal and equitable owners are on pages 1, 11, 14 of the development agreement, or pages 236, 246, and 249 of your packet. Number two, the duration of the agreement. So in recital four, the duration of agreement, the agreement shall terminate upon the earlier of the following dates. The date on which the construction of the project is complete and the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, therefore, or six years from the effective date. So long as there is an active construction activity on the properties consistent with the agreement, the agreement shall be deemed effective. In addition, this agreement and its duration may be extended by mutual agreements of the parties. The recordation of the valid and final certificate of occupancy for the project by any party heretofore or the successor in interest shall be conclusive evidence in the termination of this agreement. Number three, the development uses permitted on the land, including population densities and building intensities and heights. In recital P, the city and the developer acknowledge and agree that the project and improvement shall be constructed in a single phase consistent with the concept plan. For clarification purposes, the project shall include the demolition of the existing improvements located on the west parcels and the construction of an eight-story hotel building, just seven stories over parking inclusive of the rooftop amenity level, consisting of 53 transient accommodation units and three residential units and related infrastructure and improvements thereon, and the demolition of existing improvements located on the east parcels and the construction of one-story retail structure on the east parcels, which shall be integrated into a three-story parking deck thereover, and provide parking for all improvements, which are part of the project. The existing three-unit triplex located on the east parcels is proposed to be demolished and uses open space and necessary stormwater retention. This is also shown on the site data table. And this is the site data table. Number four, a description of public facilities that will service the development, including who shall provide such facilities, the date any new facilities, if needed, will be constructed and is scheduled to assure public facilities are available concurrent with the impacts of the development. In recital K, the developer will complete a concurrency evaluation for the project and determine that public facilities and services are sufficient to serve the project. Accordingly, upon approval and full execution of the agreement, developers shall permit the water, wastewater, and reclaimed water through Pinellas County, permit the stormwater management system through SWIFT MUD, and permit the solid waste recreation and open space capacity through the city. Number 11, public facilities. The parties acknowledge that all infrastructure and service for fire protection, potable water, and sanitary sewer to meet domestic and fire flow levels of service as required for the project are available to the properties, and that no new additional or upsized facilities are required. Number five, a description of any reservation or dedication of land for public purposes. There's no reservation or dedication of land for public purposes. Number six, a description of all local development permits approved or needed to be approved for the development of the land. In recital R, in consideration of the city's findings that the public facilities and services are sufficient to serve the project, the developer's compliance with all the conditions and obligations as set forth in this agreement, developers shall be entitled to apply for and obtain building permits and receive certificates of occupancy for development of the project. In recital six, there's quite a few. I'll go through all of them. That the development rights set forth in this agreement approval are subject to the following conditions. Number four, all construction associated with the project shall be subject to the requirements of the Florida Building Code, city's land development regulations, the Florida Fire Prevention Code, and all other technical codes adopted by the city and FEMA in existence at the time of the building permit approval. Number five, all onsite construction activities related to the erosion control shall be applied as required by the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, SWIFT MUD, and the city's Code of Ordinances. Number six, proof of SWIFT MUD environmental resource permit approval or exemption of the drainage requirements is required prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Seven, proof of FDOT drainage connection permits required prior to certificate of occupancy being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Eight, final approval of the city's engineer of the civil and utility site plan and construction plans prior to building permits being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Number nine, final approval of the city's Public Works Department for the plans for solid waste collection prior to building permits being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Ten, final approval of the city's fire chief of the site plan as it relates to fire codes issues prior to building permits being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Eleven, final approval of the community service department and the city's civil engineer for site compliance with the site plan requirements of Article 2 of Chapter 110 of the Land Development Code prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy by the city for any portion of the project. Twelve, receipt by the developer of any necessary permits and approvals from FDOT and construction of the FDOT improvements prior to certificate of occupancy being issued by the city for any portion of the project. Fourteen, the developer executing or recording the Unity of Title instrument declaring the west parcels and east parcels to be unified as an indivisible building and development site. Provided, however, the foregoing shall not preclude or prohibit the developer from subjecting the properties to a condominium form or ownership to provide for the continued cooperation and maintenance for the project. Nineteen, final approval from the city's community service department and the city's engineer of the developers- Nineteen, final approval from the city's Community Service Department and the city's engineer of the developer's traffic circulation plan to be submitted with the site plan. And this is a continuance of criteria six. Law and ordinance compliance, failure of this agreement to address any particular permit, condition, term, restriction, or to require development permission shall not relieve the developer of the necessity of complying with the law governing said permitting requirements, conditions, terms, or restrictions in any manner or thing required under existing ordinances of the city or regulations of any other governmental agency or other entity having legal authority over the properties. And twelve, permits, development permits which may need to be approved and issued, including but not limited to the following. City building permits, SWIFT MUD, surface water management permit, Pinellas County Utility Permit, FDOT right-of-way connection permit, all other approvals or permits as required by existing governmental regulations at the time of the development review application. Number seven, a finding that the development permitted or proposed is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. Recital O, the city has determined that the concept plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations, subject to certain conditions as provided for herein. Criteria eight, a description of any conditions, terms, restrictions, or other requirements determined to be necessary by the city for the public health, safety, or welfare of its citizens. No conditions, terms, restrictions, or other requirements deemed necessary by the city for public health, safety, or welfare of its citizens. And nine, the concept plan, the city shall not consent to any substantial modification unless it deems that such is in the best interest of the public and in its discretion. In reaching such decision, it shall be deemed to be acting in a legislative capacity and within its sole and absolute discretion, taking into account of, account the public health, safety, and welfare. Exhibit C and the restrictive covenant, these restrictions shall be a covenant running with the land as provided by law and shall be binding upon the undersigned and heirs, successors, and assigns to the undersigned and all parties claiming under them. So these are from the restrictive covenant. Section one, no activity involving amplified sound shall be conducted exterior to or upon the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel. Provided however, the foregoing shall not preclude the use of music in connection with the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel so long as the music is directed towards the west and is otherwise baffled to prevent that sound from traveling to the north, south, or east of the hotel building. Outdoor uses and activities are allowed for the east parcels as defined in the development agreement in accordance with the land use designation in all city ordinances in effect at that time. In section two, no development will be conducted west of the CCCL except for approved dune walkovers. Provided however, the foregoing shall not preclude the placement and use of portable and non, or non-permanent lounge-type chairs and cabanas or tents west of the CCCL by the project's hotel. The portable or non-permanent lounge-type chairs and cabanas or tents may be, may only be placed in the 20 feet east of the mean high water line and not extending wider than the property lines from sunrise to one hour after sunset. Non-hotel guests will have access to the restaurant of the hotel, but full restaurant services will not be exempt to the beach. And no tables or standard chairs or picnic tables and seating will be allowed. The development must comply with Chapter 42, Article 3, Beach Debris of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances. Placement and use of portable or non-permanent cabanas and lounge-type chairs shall not be within 10 feet of any dune system or nesting turtles. This is the area described in the restrictive covenant and the development agreement showing that area where the lounge-type chairs could be. Yeah, so number nine, a statement indicating that the failure of the agreement to address a particular permit, condition, term, or restriction shall not relieve the developer of the necessity of complying with the law governing said permitting requirements, conditions, terms, or restrictions. The number six, law and ordinance compliance, failure of this agreement to address a particular permit, condition, term, restriction, or to require development permission shall not relieve the developer of any necessity of complying with the law governing said permitting requirements, conditions, terms, or restrictions in any manner or thing required under existing ordinance of the city or regulations of any other governmental agency other than or any other entity having legal authority over the properties. And number 10, such additional information or requirements as the city may determine necessary. In recital S, the development rights set forth in this agreement approval are subject to the following conditions. It's one through 19, which is inclusive of all conditions set forth in the planned development rezone ordinance, which is 2022-01. So I'll go through those conditions. A, an existing condition demolition or CSWM plan is required and will be made available per the NTDS permit at the development review. B, per section 14-123, all utilities serving the proposed facility must be underground. Specifically, the overhead aerial located on the north side of 145th Avenue must be underground. C, provide location of fire department connection on final site plan. D, provide authorization from FDOT for a new crosswalk location adjacent to property as condition of final site plan. If FDOT authorization cannot be obtained, the site plans must be reevaluated for pedestrian access. E, provide a statement in plan on final site plan detailing requirements for a valet parking system for a hotel guest to mitigate the danger of pedestrian or auto conflict between the hotel building on the west and the parking on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. Unless and until the Florida Department of Transportation provides a crosswalk with the associated protective lighting and signaling to the position directly between the hotel and the parking on the east of Gulf Boulevard, valet service shall be available 24/7 as a condition of development plan approval. When the crosswalk is provided as described, valet services will continue to be provided during the hours of food and beverage operations plus one half hour after. F, the development will be required to meet all appropriate land development regulations during the development review process. G, the hotel can provide hotel guests with lounge-type chairs and cabanas for use on the beach, and will provide services to these guests as is customary for hotels. Non-hotel guests will have access to the restaurant of the hotel, but full restaurant services will not be extended to the beach, and no tables or standard chairs or picnic tables and seating will be allowed. H, the hotel and events operations will utilize the beach area for special event, events approved by the city's special events permits. I, hotel staff will police the area used by customers to ensure it is clean and free of debris of any kind, and that all furnishings and equipment are removed nightly in accordance with leave-no-trace requirements per city ordinance. J, where turtle nests are found, hotel access and operations will be altered as needed to ensure the integrity of the nests and safety of the hatchlings. All hotel rooms and public areas will be posted with permanent notices regarding sea turtle safety and requirements. All turtle lighting requirements are mandatory and may be updated and amended from time to time. They'll be met on an ongoing basis during turtle season. K, the design of the retail and structured parking will include architectural detail or a unique design to disguise the parking floors of the building, creating a consistent aesthetic with the first floor commercial. L, a dune walkover is required from the hotel ground floor to the beach access to ensure preservation and protection of dune systems. M, the dumpster for the hotel may require more space. The site is allowed to lose one parking space to increase the dumpster size in the hotel area. The dumpster size will be determined at the site plan stage. N, the residential medium lot located on 145th Avenue, shown as a park on the concept plan, can include private recreation area ancillary to private residential use through the PD process. However, responsibility for construction, maintenance, security, and liability for the park rests with the developer and landowner. As an ancillary use, the lot can be developed only for service of the principal use, which is residential, and as such would not serve the public, serve the public benefit. Staff recommends the lot to be designed for open space and the level of drainage that could otherwise be required to accommodate the allowed 0.7 impervious surface ratio area. Oh, the parking areas must meet design standards of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, zoning article seven, off-street parking and loading. P, the development must meet all floodplain requirements of Chapter 94 of the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances. Areas below base flood elevation plus four feet of freeboard in the coastal A zone will be allowed for uses enclosed drive floodproof space only when a signed and sealed engineering report from a registered engineer from the state of Florida states the flood velocity does not exceed five feet per second and shows the conformance with certain human intervention limits can be achieved. In Q, no activity involving amplified sound shall be conducted exterior to or upon the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel. Provided however, the foregoing shall not preclude the use of music in connection with the rooftop amenity level or pool deck of the hotel so long as the music is directed towards the west and is otherwise baffled to prevent that sound from traveling to the north, south, or east of the hotel building. The developer shall enter into a separate recordable form restrictive covenant in favor of the city setting forth that for said use restrictions. Outdoor uses and activities are allowed for the east parcels in accordance with land use designations and all city ordinances in effect on the date of the hotel building permit is issued. B, a development agreement may provide that the entire development or any phase thereof be commenced or completed with, within a specific time period, period of time. Then four, that explains the duration of the agreement. This agreement shall terminate upon the earlier of the following dates. The date on which the construction of the project is complete and issuance of a valid certificate of occupancy or six years from the affected date. So long as there is an active construction activity on the properties consistent with this agreement, the agreement shall be deemed effective. In addition, this agreement and its duration may be extended by mutual agreement of the parties. Recordation of the valid and final certificate of occupancy for the project by any party heretofore the successor in interest shall be conclusive evidence of the termination of this agreement. Staff recommends approval of the development agreement, including exhibits A through C associated with the schooner project. Just a minute. And staff recommends that on page 239 of the packets to change line eight in recital S15 to hotel guests will have access to. Currently, this reads, non-hotel guests will have access, will, will have to access the restaurant. This should be, non-hotel guests will have, have access to. The same, I have another.
What section is that in?
That is in. Yes, it's recital S. It's S15. Line eight. On page 239, in the same language shows up in the restrictive covenant.
I think we need to go by the contract page numbers because they're off by two and three in our packet. The way it was like bait stand, yeah.
So this is page four of the development agreement. Recital S. It's S15.
Okay, so 15.
Yes.
Okay, because S is on the previous page, so it's hard for us. Okay, got it.
And that's line eight. So the same language shows up on page 43 of the development agreement, and that's within the restrictive covenant. On line three.
So it should say, non-hotel guests will have access to the restaurant of the hotel?
Yes.
Okay. Just remove the two-letter word two.
It's switching it after access. That two just needs to go after access. And that is all staff house. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion amongst the commission?
Nothing, except it puts in writing all the things they have to do. I mean, it was even more than what I listed. We got a lot more than what I, I kind of listed the big stuff in my view when I read through this. But now I see there's even more requirements of the developer, so I'm satisfied.
Mayor, we need to open it up to the public before you have, complete your discussion because you may want to consider what they're having to say as well, so if, okay, okay.
Floor is open for discussion. Anyone like to speak on this? Okay, welcome back.
Timothy Weber, Weber, Crabbe, and Wean, 5453 Central Avenue, St. Petersburg, here on behalf of Michael Berg. Again, this development agreement really solidifies and codifies an agreement with the developer. The concept that you're not approving their site plan as part of this PD rezoning, but you're leaving it to be decided by staff and others at a later time. And so that is the primary issue as far as the development agreement is concerned, is the delegation of this commission's authority and responsibility to others by entering into this agreement. And from that reason, we think it's not compliant with your code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Katie Cole with the law firm of Hill Ward Henderson, representing the applicant. Ms. Rowan went through each one of the criteria and provisions in the agreement that specifically articulate how this fuses together and synthesizes the applications, the approval of the PD, and provides the city and the public the extra conditions in, in, through the deed restrictions that you all would seek. And just as a follow-up to Mr. Weber's statement regarding site plan approval, a major site plan approval is articulated in your code and that process is clear as to who approves that, so, which is the planning commission. So from that standpoint, we clearly aren't looking to do something improper or obviate a process. It's just a matter of providing additional protections to the city and its citizens. So we would respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the commission?
Just that I would like, if we put the city conditions, some of the important ones into the alcohol license and things like that, so that we have some type of recourse. If there is a disagreement.
Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think that's probably a year or two down the road though for that, but certainly we can look at that when it comes across. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the development, development agreement. With the two changes, the two typos basically that were talked to us about the guests will have access to instead of guests will have to access.
The development agreement between JJB Property Holdings. Okay, would you like to throw that at me again?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve the development agreement between the city and JJB Property Holdings LLC and Slinski. I believe I got that right because I've written notes all over it, Rentals LLC. With the two changes that we just, two typos.
Okay.
Corrected.
Is there a second?
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is unfinished business. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero-two parking fee commitment excludes part of all parking meters. Mr. Loughlin, would you like to?
Excuse me, mayor, we need to go back to the public hearings, A, B, and C.
Yeah.
Sorry. Still have three public hearings.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. I'm just
You were going in order.
I could skip over them so we can shorten this meeting up. Okay.
Okay, A.
Uh, next is a public hearing twenty twenty-two dash zero-two amendment to chapter ninety-four floodplain management to regulate manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. Second reading and public hearing.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and read that ordinance.
Okay.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-two, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter ninety-four floodplain management of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach to amend section ninety-four dash ninety-three to add definitions for manufactured home and recreational vehicle to amend section ninety-four dash one oh three to provide for zoning limitations on installation of manufactured homes and occupied recreational vehicles, providing for applicability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-two by title only.
Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this is to coming to compliance with FEMA expectations and state law. The proposed amendment to ninety-four will not allow the installation of manufactured home or occupied recreational vehicles in flood hazard areas. City currently does not allow manufactured homes or occupied recreational vehicles in the floodplain. However, the state and the federal authorities would like us to spell that out specifically. And so the amendment solidify the current practice and assure the city of Madeira Beach Code ordinances in good standing with Florida statutes and the National Flood Insurance Program, Community Rating Service Program.
Thank you. Of course, this is a second reading, so we've been over this before. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
No, sir.
Any public comment on this? Now have a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance number two zero two-two dash zero-two.
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-three comprehensive plan text amendment Activity Center, second reading and public hearing.
Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-three, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Madeira Beach to establish a land use category for Activity Center, providing for severability and providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date thereof. That was a reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-three by title only.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, there've been known change to this since first reading. The purpose is to create a category with that's consistent with the county rule that allows us to apply an Activity Center land use in areas as you deem appropriate through the land use process. There's no specific property or location associated with this text change. It merely brings us more into compliance with the county rule and gives us more flexibility in land use decisions.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Nope.
Is there any public comment on this? No. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance two zero two-two dash zero-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The most carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-four speed limits, first reading and public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-four, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending section sixty-six dash thirty-four to include speed limit designation for South Bay Shore Drive between one hundred and fortieth Avenue East and Island Drive and providing for an effective date hereup. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-four by title only.
Mr. Gomez, I know you've done quite a bit of research into this. Would you like to take the floor, take the lead on this, please?
Yes, thank you, mayor. And mayor and commission, the, as we discussed during the workshop, this area that due to the creation of a four-way stop on one hundred and fortieth and North and South Bay Shore created traffic utilizing South Bay Shore between one hundred and fortieth and Island Drive is essentially a, a cut-through street. So we obtained some traffic data counted, that counted cars, counted speeds, didn't really show a speeding problem, but felt that the reduction in the speed limit would in essence, make the street safer for, for vehicles, for pedestrians. That is the, the recommendation in the requested ordinance. There was a, we obtained information from residents received ten responses that are noted and nearly all of them supportive of reducing the speed limit. Additionally, there is a a, a support for adding traffic control devices such as either speed humps or speed tables. As I stated during the workshop, I feel, we feel it is much more recommended at this time that we actually look at a citywide traffic control, taking into account various neighborhoods to determine the needs for traffic control devices. We would utilize essentially the economies of scale to properly budget for that and, and get the, essentially the best pricing it is, which would be less by looking comprehensively throughout the city at various neighborhoods for traffic control devices. But in the interim, we certainly recommend reducing the speed limit on South Bay Shore between one hundred and fortieth and Island Drive. And just quickly, the speeding of issue or the tracking vehicle, excuse me, the twenty-six hundred and sixty-four vehicles that were tracked using a, a speed divide detecting device. Again, did not significantly show any significant issues, although that showed that the average speed ended up being just over twenty, essentially twenty-five miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit, but lowering the speed limit again would think one, make residents feel a little bit at ease with just the, what appears to be an increase in the number of, of vehicles using that South Bay Shore road. And we've also requested and have had the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office have some directed patrols of the area and they have not issued any citations for speeding. They have issued some for running the stop signs. I don't have the data as to that number, but they will continue with those directed patrols at least through next week. We may extend it for the rest of the month. Just so that in essence, anybody cutting through that area to include commercial vehicles that they are made well aware that the, the speed limit is currently twenty-five and we will certainly issue a lot of information and properly notify that the speed limit will be reduced to fifteen, should the commission proceed with adopting this ordinance on first reading, followed by next month's regular meeting, a second reading of the ordinance. Are you happy to answer any questions you may have?
Mr. City Manager, I have a question. There is, you said there was only one vehicle that was going fifty-seven miles per hour in that area. That was just one vehicle. By reducing the, the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen, do you honestly feel like that's going to make a big difference? Because they're going to travel that road regardless.
There will continue to be vehicles. I know there have, there has also been a, comments made to eliminate the stop signs on one hundred and fortieth, which I do not recommend and even both the, the sheriff's deputies that have been out there do not recommend that. Either that would make a hundred, it would likely alleviate some of the issues on South Bay Shore. However, it would increase speeds like highly likely on one hundred and fortieth. Typically residents that are driving, again, if a speed limit is lowered to fifteen, it is highly likely that you would have residents concerned that if they do drive above twenty miles an hour, then they would be potentially issued a citation, even though none have been issued. All studies around do show that when you do lower speed limits, it does lower the the risk and the likelihood of any type of, of collision, whether property and or, or people, and certainly that is a very walkable area. I understand, I mean, the streets do that street, South Bay Shore does not have sidewalks as well as many other streets in that area, but lowering speed limits does, I mean, all data indicates that they do tend to save lives. And it only adds a few seconds to everyone's commute or driving through there. Even if you drive through there two, three, four times a day, you're looking at them, you know, each time probably three to four seconds of additional. I'm upwards of probably seven or eight seconds driving fifteen miles an hour versus twenty-five miles an hour.
I traveled that road almost every day and I've never seen the problem out there. And that's the thing that confuses me the most. I do know of the vehicle that was going fifty-seven. So there's no doubt about that, but I feel like reducing the, the speed, the down like we want to do, I just don't see the advantage of it at this point.
I think it's to keep cars from using that as a cutoff.
Well, you're talking about Bay Shore.
Right.
Using Bay Shore.
Right.
Sure, that's fine.
So that would be, I mean.
They'll go in down one hundred and fortieth.
Right, it should be going down one hundred and fortieth, but instead of cutting through a neighborhood with no sidewalks, it's requiring people to go to the stop sign and, and turn, turn right. Which they're stopping anyway, I would assume, or almost stopping. We talked about this right place?
Yes.
The little cut through on the right, the first right-hand turn.
If you're on one hundred and fortieth heading, as you're heading east, you come to the four-way stop at North and South Bay Shore and one hundred and fortieth. Cars are taking a right and driving down South Bay Shore is prior to that section being a four-way, they would drive on one hundred and fortieth and then make a right onto Island Drive. There were no stop signs in your drive. Now there is one stop sign, so drivers, you know, likely are, well, I'll just take a right and that'll save me.
People were taking that right anyway.
Well, I'm sure that, that, that's what was happening. Now you're being forced to stop.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that it's Bay Shore where you want to reduce the.
Correct, yeah, just on South Bay Shore. No, I'm sorry, to be clear, on South Bay Shore between one hundred and fortieth and Island Drive.
Okay, well, there's no problem with that. All right, I understand that. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Well, that's, you know, whoever doesn't want the stop sign at Bay Shore and one hundred and fortieth hasn't lived here long because one hundred and fortieth was a racetrack before that stop sign was put in. So I'm all for reducing that speed. I think the only person that has ever beat me onto Island Drive is the one that was doing fifty-seven miles an hour. Because normally someone can be ahead of me at that stop sign and they take a right on the South Bay Shore and I go straight and every time I will pass them stopped at the next stop sign on Island Drive. So the people that think they're saving time, taking that shortcut are just, you know, just wrong. And the people that, like I say, the people that want to do away with a stop sign hadn't been here long and doesn't know all we've run into with the speed problems we had on one hundred and fortieth. So that's why that stop sign's there. So I'm all in favor of this ordinance. Anyone else? Any other comments? Any comments from the public?
Hi again.
Welcome back.
Hi. Bill Julian, I live at four oh seven South Bay Shore. Myself and my neighbor Greg behind me are probably the closest to this, this incident or this issue as anybody is. First of all, I want to thank you for even addressing this. I want to thank you for your email reply and you actually called me back one day. And those were after many months of trying to come, excuse me, communicate with somebody and get something done on this. So I thank you for even hearing this. It's really, this is not a convenience thing. This is a public safety thing. And I think that's your first job in the city. I live two, literally two, at four oh seven, two houses from that corner on the west side. I used to live on Crystal Drive and I took that shortcut once or twice and realized what you just said. That you're not going to beat anybody and I didn't try to speed down there, but you know, again, it's not a convenience issue. It's a, it's a public safety issue. We have been threatened. We have had cars almost run us over to this, but as of today. We had one guy that, and we know him by license plate and car, and in some cases by name now, that's how often this goes on. Literally just drives by, doesn't even look at anybody and just goes like this. Excuse my gestures.
Oh.
So that's where this has gotten to. Emotions are getting high and it's going to take somebody getting hurt to get something done. There was never a speed limit sign there until approximately six weeks ago. I think with the emails, the questionnaire that you guys sent out and what have you, and, and some of our phone calls probably pushed that to get, to get installed. Yet they just came out and threw a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign in, in my, my mind arbitrarily. You really can't even see the sign when you make that right-hand turn. It's so close to the corner. So if you do go to fifteen, which I encourage you to do heavily, I would say bring it closer, even closer to my house. So somebody, when they make the turn, they have the time to actually see the speed limit sign. If you look down the other way, down North Bay Shore, it's approximately, I'll just give it two hundred yards. There's a speed limit sign that's been there ever since I've lived there. And I've been in that neighborhood for almost eight years now of twenty miles an hour and that's a straight shot. And then after that, it's another fifty yards or so where you've got a curve. And I don't know, it probably goes down, but I don't believe there's any signs there. As you travel that, there's another fifteen. So I think that other small road that has the fifteen mile an hour certainly justifies, or it, it really mimics what we have. Okay, with that curved road and you can't see anywhere. There's no sidewalks. You can park on this, on the street. Which we, you know, full disclosure, we've actually done just to discourage traffic. I can do it legally and I've got plenty of parking, you know, in my driveway.
Thank you.
Am I over the limit?
Your time is up.
Can I request some more time? I mean, this is a big issue and we've been, you know, we, we're the ones that have been pushing this for a long, long time. So if I could, I really appreciate that. I'll try to go through my notes quickly.
Be brief.
The, when you're heading north from South Bay Shore and you get to the one fortieth intersection, if you stop at the stop sign and the. If you stop at the stop sign and the, and the painted line that's in the street that goes along with that. You can't see anybody coming 140th. It's too far back. The curb, that one particular curb. Is designed and built a little bit differently than the other three on those corners. Um, there's a guy who built a large home, I call it a compound. With all kind of foliage and foliage and such in there. It looks nice, but you can't see through that stuff to see what's coming on 140th. So what happens is you stop at the stop sign. You proceed and the people coming down 140th, they think you're just getting there. And you haven't stopped because they don't know where the stop sign is. So they'll start proceeding. I've already made my stop, my stop, excuse me, and going through, we've almost hit. Coming south from North Bay Shore to cross over, thank you for that other stops time because I can actually get over. And cross over the 140th safely now. There's no sidewalks there. Pedestrians walk all the time. There's dogs, there's children. Um, and again, we've had no signs. I would also encourage not only the speed limit, which I hope you'll address and vote for today. But I would encourage the speed tables or speed bumps as well. And I mean that seriously. I've heard some, uh, some talk about it being put down, excuse me, put off budget issues. Find the better pricing and things like that. It doesn't, it doesn't work for us.
Okay, sir, I'm really, I'm gonna have to cut you off here.
So can I go again?
You're, you're, you've got friends that can speak.
Okay, well, I spent a lot of time making a lot of notes. Putting a lot of stuff here. I've got emails and such that I wanted to address. There's more to it than what you guys are talking about in three minutes or six minutes. It's not enough to really address it properly. So, um, you know, take that for what it's worth, but.
We're on your side.
Uh, well, please do something with the speed tables and speed bumps because from what I hear, that's not going to be, that's not going to be handled. And it's like somebody else said, you put a speed limit sign there, they're still going to do it. And they do it now purposely just to come after us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Let's keep that sheriff out there after we lower that speed limit.
Yes. That's part of it.
Yeah.
How y'all doing?
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
Please state your name and address, please.
Oh, yeah. My name's Greg Castle. Uh, the 408 South Bay Shore right across the street from Bill. So I'm a couple houses in from that corner as, as well. And Robin came out, met me in the, in the street there one day. We sat and talked and things. It was very nice. And we got through a lot of issues there. And the comment that I'd like to make is the basis of some of this is the data that I've seen that the sheriff put together. I saw the box they put up there. When they put it up was the New Year's Day week. So it was a six day period of time. There were 2,700 cars came through there in six days on that little street. Imagine that, divide that, that's 500 cars a day roughly or whatever. Say you want to say 500 and some cars a day. You've got that going on. There were 31, um, cars that sped that would have been given tickets. The, the one that you mentioned, the 57 miles an hour was, was totally ridiculous. Who knows what that was? But the average speed of those tickets were 31 miles an hour, I believe is what that, what that data said. So the basis of this needs to be clarified. It should be understood clearly that the, the data that was used was. Taken during a holiday week, not during a work week, and it's much different during work weeks. Sorry, I can tell you that right now. You can only imagine people wanting to get out of that neighborhood. And by the time they get from John's Pass Road. Through Crystal Drive and there, they're ready to hit it, get out of that neighborhood. And that's what we, that's what we live with. Whether the sheriff got them and showed that speeding on that data. Is not relevant to me at this point. Um, it should have been done during the week when there's, when people are actually going to work to and from work and they're in a hurry. So that's just one of the flaws that I saw. Everything else is good. Robin's done a great job and I really do thank you for doing this also to get the 15 miles an hour. But as Bill said, I think the only way this is going to work and the deputies have told me this is their own testimony to me. I've spoken to four of them. They all agree that without speed tables, that these signs are nothing more than a suggestion. Okay, and that's what we get. 15 miles an hour, to your point, they're still going to go 35. They won't ticket them again to that, to these deputies' testimony. They won't ticket unless it's 10 miles an hour. And then they say probably only 12. So if it's 25, they're going to go 37 before they get a ticket. They haven't issued one. Speeding citations since I've lived there that I know of. I don't believe that the stop sign citations are even relevant to this. That's a whole different issue to me. You know, what they're doing there. So I just wanted to make it clear that that data should be reviewed with some. You know, take it with some grain of salt. That is not probably going to be reflective of what the actual problems are. So. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Julie Guo. I reside at 408 South Bay Shore. And so this is, uh. An issue that's very intimate to all of us in the neighborhood. Um, not many have the luxury of having a porch outside to appreciate the beauty. And where we live. And just fundamentally, uh, this is a community safety issue. We have seen so many near misses of people with dogs and baby buggies. It's scary and myself personally, a couple of instances of just crossing the street to go chat with our neighbors. And about being taken out multiple times and being flipped off. It's really just. It's a safety issue and I implore you to look at that data that they collected, um, and you guys shared a little snippet of that slide. But I have here on the speed enforcement evaluator, that little, um, meter that there was over 400 vehicles in that off peak week of no one going to school, traversing to and fro. And to work, you know, because it was on the New Year's Eve. At 11:30, they, uh, installed those black box devices and they took them down at like seven or eight AM on the 5th of January. Uh, so it does not reflect the, the normal, uh, flow of traffic. And there are over 400, when you just look here at that top, uh, vehicle totals combined, um, and who was going at what speeds just in general. So. Speed hump in concert with the speed being reduced, I encourage you to. Take that seriously because with the 15 mile per hour sign, quite frankly, it's just like you said, it's a suggestion. And so unless there's enforcement that we are guaranteed by the sheriff's department. Um, I just don't see this being anything that's going to change or improve, quite frankly. Because it's something that we see daily. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Oh. Is, is there a motion on ordinance 2022 dash 04?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 04, speed limit reduction on South Bay Shore from 25 to 15 miles per hour.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is unfinished business. Uh, resolution 2022 dash 02. Parking meter. Commitment excludes Archibald Park meters.
Mayor Commissaries, this is resolution 2022 dash 02, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Midair Beach, Florida, committing additional parking revenues generated from the adoption of ordinance 2021 dash 28, other than. Those from Archibald Park, uh, parking meters to be used exclusively as a funding mechanism for the design and construction of a parking garage facility. Within one half mile of John's Pass Village, repealing resolution 2022 dash 01. And providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution 2022 dash 02 by title only.
Okay, thank you. Floor is open for comment?
I can give a brief overview if you'd like.
Okay, yes, please.
So as you recall, resolution 2022 dash 01 was passed to designate all parking. Revenue increase for that 50 cents for all meters citywide to go towards a, uh, the construction. Engineering, design, construction of a parking garage within one half mile of John's Pass Village. Upon further evaluation. Any revenues generated from Archibald Park, which includes parking, uh, revenues. Must be spent in accordance with resolution 20313, also from the requirements of US Department of Interior National Park Service. And that states that those proceeds of those revenues generated from Archibald Park operations must be used exclusively to fund. The maintenance of Archibald Memorial Park and other parks and recreational activities. Within the city. So then I conferred with their city attorney. And questioned, does the construction of a parking garage? Fall within those confines of the eligibility requirements as. Other parks and recreational activities with the city. We ultimately concluded, no, it does not. It should be stripped out. So that's what the intention of resolution 2022 02 does. All other parking. Revenue increases for that 50 cents, uh, they're in a general fund. We will, uh, commit to that, uh, to that endeavor to construct a parking facility. But we do need to strip out the, the Archibald parking, um, revenues, um, as those are restricted in nature. So that's what this clarifies. And, and passing resolution 2022 dash 02. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Okay, so.
Nope. Go ahead. No, no, I was, I don't have any questions. Sounds like you kind of don't have a choice.
Well, um. One question I have is that can, and we may already be doing this. The cleaning of the restrooms and whatnot at Archibald Park. Is that? Is some of that money used? For that purpose? On, you know, as a part of maintenance of Archibald Park?
Yeah, I think all expenses in Archibald Park are included in the Archibald Park Fund. So unless Megan, there's.
Well, yeah, but, but we've got a con, we've got a blanket contract that covers the city. That's why I'm wondering if. Part of that is carved out from the Archibald Fund to pay. Part of the, part of those sanitation services.
So are we referring to the cleaning or?
Yes.
Okay, so, so per the contract with the snack shack, they actually reimburse the city for the cost of the cleaning services for the restroom.
Okay.
If that's what, if that was.
Well, I was, yeah, I was just saying if, if we're paying out of city funds for the cleaning over there. Under the blanket contract that we've got. Are we taking some Archibald funds to pay a, uh, Archibald Park's portion? Of that cleaning service?
Yeah, we will, that's a kind of an accounting question, I guess. We need to, we'll review in the fund expenditures. I'm sure that hopefully we are. And if not, we will be breaking that out.
In general, there are. Maintenance services that are provided that. Or impacts citywide. And then we look at those and, and determine. And a equitable allocation to devote to John's Pass Village. To Archibald Park.
Okay.
And other areas. So what you're referring to would be, would be one of several instances where yes, Archibald Park would bear some of that cost.
Okay, good. That's all. That's all I have. Anyone else have anything?
No.
Is there any public comment on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution 2022 dash two. Parking fee commitment, which excludes Archibald parking meters from the 50 cent increase.
Is there a second?
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is contracts and agreements. First is F dot. Grant approval roadway improvement 50% match grant approval. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm fantastic.
This is, this is a nice day to approve a grant.
Oh, good. I have a couple for you to approve then. So that's great news. So what you have before you with this FDOT grant is, um. Was funded, um, actually at a 67% by the state and 33% local funds from the city. So this will go towards area three. Um, so before you, what I'm requesting is for you to accept the grant and. We are currently working on design with Pinellas County for. Replacement of the water in the sewer lines as well. So we'll bring that design as soon as we move forward with that.
Great.
Good job.
Thank you. Any questions amongst the commission? Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass the FDOT grant approval. For the roadway instruction.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner An- Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is watershed management plan. Director Webfer, welcome back.
Hello again. So this is another grant, uh, 50% from Swift Month. Um, I have Justin here from advanced to answer any questions you may have. Um, with the down and dirty of this plan. As you can see in the memo that I've created, the last time that we had an update to. The stormwater master plan was in 2013. So this is pretty prudent, not to mention it's not just. The master plan, it goes in a little bit deeper than that. Do you have any questions I can bring Justin up to answer?
I do not. Anyone else?
I don't.
How long does this take? When do we think it's going to be completed?
I'm going to rely to Justin on that one.
Okay.
How you doing? Justin Keller with Advanced Engineering. Appreciate y'all having me here today. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
Um, so we're looking at about 24 to 36 months for completion. Um, there are three main deliverables for the project. Um, obviously tho- those would be phased and submitted, um, but a total out the door, uh, timeline, we're looking at about 24 to 36 months.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thanks.
Just be sure you're not speeding through our neighborhoods. Any other questions? Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass, uh, the watershed management plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to.
Next is undergrounding task one approval. Director Webfer. Welcome back.
Hello again. I apologize for all my items on this agenda. But what you have before you is the approval of the first task for the undergrounding to finish Gulf Boulevard from 144 to John's Pass. So what's included in the, on this phase is the coordination. And the design and the planning and the construction phase.
Okay, so this, this is what we were talking about in the budget on just. Get it done.
Correct.
Okay. Good.
So I'll, I'll come before you, before we approve, whenever we're towards task two, but. Currently, right now, we're still waiting on Duke Energy to finish the binding costs. They just did the walkthrough of Gulf Boulevard last week. So we should have more information on that and we'll have more numbers.
And what will task two?
That will be the bidding and the actual construction.
Okay, then have you got a timeframe for that?
I do not yet, but I can have that for you. Hopefully as soon as we get the information from Duke Energy.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were using the same. Company that is traveling down the Gulf Boulevard doing all the towns.
We are, we are using utility contractors. They, they came before you for a presentation. And we're further ahead than the Reddingtons because we've already done the binding cost estimate with Duke Energy. Which they have not started that yet.
So do we have to wait for them to come down the beach? No, they're going to go ahead and do us. Okay, and this is part of the.
Penny.
Penny from Pinellas, money that we received.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Soon as we can get a, uh. Some kind of timeline on completion.
Yes, sir.
That'd be fun to hear.
I agree.
I know everybody's excited about that one.
I am.
Okay, anyone else got anything? Any public comment? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make them, oh. We fight over the good stuff. You make me do all the bad stuff. Okay, well controversial. I thought that we approved the underground task one as presented by our Public Works Department.
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The mo- the motion carried five to zero.
Great. It's great when you come up, Megan. You bring us money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great job.
Next is new business firehouse subs grant acceptance, extrication tools.
Sorry, Mayor, one item that was added after that we had omitted. You should have a.
Sanitation.
Yeah, approve to use the budgeted, prove to purchase sanitation vehicles and various equipment. Should have, yeah, it's a paper memo out here.
Is that, is that this?
Yes. Nope. Should be memorandum. It's dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This one.
Oh, okay.
It's on the online version. It was added a few days ago, a couple of days ago. We just, or Monday, we just omitted it originally. Yeah, and you received an email.
I remember that, okay.
And we did discuss this at the workshop, a little, the last work, workshop.
Correct. So this is the same as what we had discussed in the workshop, omitting for now the dump truck just because I'm still waiting on quotes. So I will proceed with the, with your approval for, with the new box for the, for the dump, for the claw truck, the two six yard easy dumps and the purchase of the two F two-fifties.
From out of lease.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion amongst the commission?
No. I'll make the approval for the, oh.
Well, we need to, we need public comment person. Would anyone like to, come on, Ray, you've been very quiet.
We have one public here.
And that's the first time I've seen you laugh, right? Okay. Is there a motion on the approval of budgeted money?
Yes, I will do it. The approval to use the budget money to purchase sanitation vehicles and equipment.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. I can tell we've all been here too long.
Yeah, because I'm about to make a motion that we keep Doug at home because he doesn't say anything.
Yeah, Doug, I've never heard you so quiet.
He's ready to go to bed, I think.
How are you feeling, partner?
Ah, hanging in there, man. This hell make it.
Yep, you'll make it.
Okay, next is new business. Robin, you don't have anything else you want to slide in? Okay.
New business.
Firehouse sub grant acceptance extrication tools.
I love all this grant talk.
Yes. So we were awarded and Ra- Raoul Perez will come up. He's, Raoul just introduced you.
Introduce yourself when you come up, but, yeah, about a grant that we received to purchase some extrication equipment.
Yeah.
Yes. So we were granted, we were able to obtain thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for new extrication tools to go on to the new ladder truck that will be taking possession later on this year. These are top of the line tools, brand new waterproof tools to include spreaders, cutters, rams that will allow us to gain access to patients involved in motor vehicle crashes with patient entrapment. Firehouse Subs funds six hundred grants a year, and we were fortunate to be selected as one of them. As, as an added bonus, it is one hundred percent funded through the Firehouse Subs Foundation, so there is no financial contribution requested from the city.
That's right. Thank you.
That's super. Who, who wrote the grant?
Chief, Chief Bo.
Well, we'll have to thank him for.
You know, not only the chief and the fire department, but I love beginning to see a lot of these grants coming forth. I know we've always asked about grants and have pushed the issue, and it's great to see a lot of them coming to fruition for the city.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, and Mayor, and thanks to the, the fire department for doing that. I obviously started that last year to look for that. And as you said, we are looking in other areas, other organizations like AARP has various grants. We're looking grants for the dog park, for example. Obviously, there's recreation, but certainly public safety ones that we can, will try to reach out to as many as we can. So great, thanks, Raoul.
Thank you very much.
I understand.
You guys have any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
No questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? Nope. Ray, come back.
Hi, Mr. Public.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the firehouse subs grant or to accept it for extradition tools.
Sir, a second?
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is city managers' January report.
Mayor Commissioners, you have in front of you in your packet the report from all the various departments, just a couple of items that I just wanted to highlight quickly. Of course, as you're aware, we're in celebrating, continue to celebrate our seventy-fifth anniversary as a municipality, back to May of nineteen forty-seven, when the city of Madeira Beach was incorporated. And I have on the screen the logo and the special events that we continue to have our, just wanted to quickly mention our first special event list at the seafood festival as I think all of you are aware, was quite successful. I do want to just give very quickly, and then I will, this will be made available in more detail to all of you. We did really the financial recap in the event at expenses of just over ninety-five thousand dollars and revenue of just under a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Expenses obviously for advertising, stage, the sound, excuse me, the musical bands that played, and then a variety of different supplies just to make the event obviously work, such as some additional electrical panels, shirts for the volunteers, et cetera. We had some staff overtime for fire, for parks and rec for the event, and a lot of the infrastructure for the event, so, et cetera. So just over ninety-five thousand. And again, the revenue we received about eleven thousand dollars in sponsors. We, obviously the vendors that participated, food and non-food, that was the majority of the revenue over fifty-five thousand for the spaces. Obviously, we sold the, some of the beverages, the beer and water, that was over thirty-five thousand dollars. So just, and then the, we incorporate also the parking that we charged at the John's Pass Park parking lot and then one hundred and thirtieth street lot. So just the, and of course, we're a municipality, essentially like a nonprofit. We, we generate the revenue that we have for future events and obviously as part of the, the budget for, in the general fund under recreation or special events. So just wanted to share that with all of you. We have other events coming up, obviously, that, that recreation is helping out with the waterfront spring festival. We have college softball teams coming here to play sixty-two games in beginning March fourth to the fifteenth. So just keeping an eye for our, the other events that we will be having, the Marina, for example, we will have the grunt hunt on March the tenth and then March the twelfth, tenth for the captains, and the twelfth is the actual competition for fishing competition, et cetera. So I just wanted also to touch quickly on parking. We now have, we have gone live so that people can obtain resident and visitor parking passes online. They don't have to come into city hall. Of course, they're, they're welcome to. We always welcome people here at city hall, but that can be done from the comfort of their own home, obtaining that information. So that's something we just recently added. And just reminders again, as one of the items this evening was on essentially public safety that we discussed on South Bay Shore. Our sheriff's deputies are constantly reminding, obviously, as the, as our, we get into the peak tourist and visitor season, encouraging people, obviously, wear your seat belts, abide by all the posted speed limits and stop signs, et cetera. It's always good to, just to remind ourselves of that drive, obviously, very carefully throughout our, our city. We have some updates from all the different departments, including building permit activity, which continues to increase. Planning is, community development, very busy on processing the applications that we have received. And of course, our parking revenue continues to increase and rightfully so due to the increases that have occurred in the last few years. So, and again, we continue to just monitor all of that as, as we're going to get busy. So just a couple of quick highlights. Of course, thanks to Claire for the information for the election and the referendums that we had, that we've had at the last couple of meetings, but that information also is in the, the city manager's report. And one item that we didn't, that I didn't include, Megan may want to comment, is the Mobi mat. Yeah, if you want to comment on, we did receive a, Megan, I'll let you explain.
We did receive our permit for the Mobi mat, and as of, I don't remember if it was last week or the beginning of this week, I received the P O, the P O for the purchase of the Mobi mat. So the Mobi mat has been ordered.
Oh, good.
I am waiting on the delivery time, and we should be receiving their refund check from Forward.
Pinellas.
Pinellas and Hope, I can't, Hug, the Hug Foundation, probably by mid next week.
So our cost is?
Zero.
Yeah, zero. So just.
How much is the Mobi mat?
The mat itself was fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
And the permit fee was two hundred and seventy, and they are also funding a sign that will be placed on the access to show what the Mobi mat does.
That's going to be at Archibald?
Yes.
And a Mobi, a mobility mat for those who may not, or those at home, it allows for easier access for disabled to go out onto the sand.
And I think that we may get updated, or we may be at the St. Pete Catalyst this Friday. I believe the foundations are going to update about Madeira Beach because nobody else has received their permit yet. So we are ahead of the game.
Yeah, and, and there's going to be a big send off when we get ours. There will, it'll, there will be a press conference.
Plan, like, I don't know if we want to plan a ribbon cutting, or I'll, I'll leave that up to you all. That's all for me.
Okay. So if, one other thing I wanted to point out, since I'm scrolling through it here, is also the elections information. I guess we're required, or I'm not sure required, but the supervisor of elections had requested that we put the information in Spanish as well. So we're required by, so if anyone has any questions about it in Spanish, please feel free to ask me, since that's my first language.
Okay. Yes, and also it's in our contract with.
And next time, if you like, I can read it in Spanish at the beginning.
Put it on reels, not verbally.
So Mayor Commission, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a, any reason why we're? Why our unleaded fuel sales were down like in half?
Yeah, so I noticed that as well. I didn't ask our, our Marina staff what, but I mean, usually January tends to be a kind of a, a little bit slower on the, on the boating, but I'll find out exactly. It could be just the timing of when the revenues were recorded, but I'll find out. I'll let you know.
That was significant. That's why I, I asked, because that was like.
Right, and the price of fuel has not gone down. It's increased a little bit.
Well, you know, and that in itself may have pushed people away from doing as much boating in this cooler weather.
Definitely a little seasonal, I think. So, and there were a few days where definitely boating was discouraged due to the choppiness out in the Gulf.
Okay, anything else?
No.
I got it?
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda setting for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Question and answer on the charter amendments. Is Alex Archibald going to be in town then? Have you spoken with him?
He was going to let me know, but I'll, I'll follow up with him.
That, yeah, that's.
See if he's here, because I think he said he was in March. But I'll find out.
Well, yeah, well, this is, this is for the February workshop. That's my concern.
I'll find it.
Okay, all right.
I've got two either questions or possible additions. Last year, we talked about a traffic study for Gulf Boulevard down by John's Pass, and we wanted to do it at, during spring break. Have we got that set up, or do we need to do something? And this is to trying to put it, maybe putting in a light and replace the two flashing yellows.
So we have started that. We've had the trailer out there, the sheriffs. It was, so far it's been out there for one week. We are going, I'm going to request, well, I mentioned it to them, that we would like it at least another three weeks. So, for example, right, maybe two in March, one in April, possibly two in April, and then again in May. So we're making that request to them tomorrow in person so that they can put that out. And then also reaching out to F, FDOT to see if they would be able to place one of their counters out there as well. But at least we, we will have the sheriffs. They did provide me yesterday the data for the first week, so I'll be, just didn't bring it for tonight to share.
I think to get a light, though, we definitely need the Florida Department.
Needs to be involved, but at least we're starting to count.
Because they like to come out here and count in like November.
March and April.
In November rather than waiting till.
Yeah.
When we actually have traffic. And while we're on that, Mr. Gomez, let's please, please talk to these contractors that are doing work on Gulf Boulevard, not to be coming out here and closing us down to one lane during the height of tourist season. And schedule this stuff more towards May or, or even the summer is not as bad as the winter or in the fall. I've been going through Treasure Island. Inevitably, if there's anything going on in Treasure Island, it's during the height of tourist season, and traffic has been backed up for a half a mile. It takes half an hour to forty-five minutes to go two miles down in Treasure Island in both directions.
Yeah.
It's horrendous. And why they don't make a phone call, I shouldn't be in a city south of us, not, not mentioning any particular cities, but be proactive in trying to get this stuff done either at night or off season. Now, I hope we keep that in mind.
Yes.
We'll do.
No, if you married that girl, you wouldn't have to go to Treasure Island.
They told me this would be a fun job. It really is.
Okay. But then the other thing.
Flabbergasted. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Did you want to put something on?
No. We talked about having building inspections for condos, hotels, things like that, and we were kind of waiting on the state to come up with guidelines. Do we know that where they are on guidelines? And is this something that we need to do? This is all, this is happened after Surfside.
Yeah.
More like inspections on.
You mean like after, I mean, there's obviously inspections during and construction. Are you referring to like safety inspections?
Yes.
In a progressive?
Making sure that condo associations put the money forth to fix theirs. I mean, I think the problem there was.
I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to infer, this might be more of a legal question. I'm sure Florida statute, if they're not, whether Florida statutes allows that, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's required, and the legislature may be addressing that during the session, but I, I can't think off the top of my head if that's.
One of our other cities along here. One of our other cities along here just reduced it from like twenty-five years or something like that down to like ten or fifteen-year inspections, because you just had a parking garage collapse in Tampa also.
Clearwater, wasn't it?
Clearwater, Clearwater, the ramp, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any requirement right now, and the condo or the building is responsible for doing the inspection themselves, but there has to be a checklist or guidelines or something. And so they would then provide the city with the information that's been inspected.
I, I can jump in here. So, um, I'm not aware of any legislation. You know, I provided you with my update on bills impacting municipalities. Um, I will take a harder look at that to see if there's something that we may have missed. But, um, I don't see that now. As for inspections, we wouldn't necessarily do inspections unless there's an active building permit.
Correct.
And if we don't have an active building permit, we wouldn't be there. There are, of course, the fire safety regulations the fire department would be doing on, um, certain condominium, um, second, third floor type, uh, facilities. And, um, you know, I'm not sure how often that inspection is done. Um, they should be done on an annual basis, but that really doesn't have anything to do with structural integrity. That has to do with access, egress, aggr- uh, access um, and smoke alarms and water sprinkler systems and that type of thing. So, um, I'm not aware of any of the other twelve cities or eleven cities that we represent, that there's any uh, current activity to make any changes to their codes. That doesn't mean that, um, some city staff members aren't working on it. It's just that I'm not aware of any that are doing anything at this point.
Yeah, I heard that at the Big C, and I don't remember which mayor it was that brought it up, but I can address it again at the next, next meeting, uh, which, by the way, will be here again.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't think we're any, I mean, we're not prohibited from creating our own if we, if that was the desire to require some sort of structural, which I think is what you were leading to, Commissioner Hudson, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not preempted to the state, then we'll have the ability to do it under Home Rule Powers.
Yeah, and they, you know, all we would have, really, all we would have to do is take the states and revise it to our standards, you know, as far as shortening the years and the condo association can have to have an inspection paid for by a, an engineer and have an engineer stamp and file it with the city.
I think that probably the, a good, a good starting point would be to get with our building official, find out what requirements are right now, what state guidelines that he would rely upon. And then go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I know that parking garage, I think, had been, I think the city had inspected it and told them to they needed to do some things, and they just didn't do it.
It's terrible. Someone died.
Yeah.
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 So.
Okay, so it sounds like it does make a, a good addition for the workshop.
It does. It does. I have two things. First, I guess we need to talk about speed bumps on Bay Shores, South Bay Shore. I'd like to, I mean, talk about, I know like twenty-seven homes were contacted about this possibility, and only ten responded, and eight of those said yes, as far as speed limit. I mean, we need to get more input, and maybe we just decide to do another survey out there and give people a chance now that we know. I mean, we have some serious people out here talking about it. So if, if they want it, and they live there, I don't, I don't see me there. Sorry. So that would be the first one. Second one, I think we need to I think we need to create or have created or have some input on some one-page performance appraisals that we can use to uh, appraise our constitutional officers here. We, I haven't done that in two years. I haven't really reviewed anybody except Bob, and that was not a very good, in my view, performance appraisal form for him. It was some generic thing, I thought. So I know we're under some sort of obligation to yearly rate, I think we are, the people that work for us. And I would like to get started on that and get a schedule going so that no one's surprised, and if, if we think they're not doing their job, or if we have something that we want to have improvement on, then we need to tell them.
Should that be a part of our annual handbook review for the commission?
If we turn it over to the s- civil service folks and our H R guy to create this, fine with me, but I'm just saying, I'd like to get something started because we're not doing it.
Well, you have been, under my employment agreement, which I'm similar to prior, that you are required to do an annual evaluation, at least of the manager.
Right.
Um, and so I haven't really started looking at that. I mean, I certainly can and provide you some.
Well, you won't like it if you look at it, at, at the form that we were given to do it last year.
Sure. Well, I'll take a look at it.
I think we need to.
But I can give you some options or, or of different evaluations that can be used, if that helps, I mean.
Well, if we. And I could check with other cities and see why they're using.
Okay. And, and when I say one page, I mean one page.
In one page.
Just one page.
And I think.
That's not hard. Most of it's free form. I mean.
Well.
I don't want to.
Is that something that? Is that something that can be gotten together for this next, um, workshop?
We can ask tomorrow.
Or if you don't have time, we'll just have to do it at the following one. There's certainly.
Would have time. I don't.
There's certainly no rush on Mr. Gomez. He just started.
No.
I don't mind.
I mean, our clerk.
Yeah.
So you're talking clerk, um, attorney, myself, and Andrew.
Really, those are the only ones.
Those are the four.
So I just think this is the beginning of me starting my push for merit raises for city employees rather than these cross-the-board things. Because once we get done, we're pushing it down to all the, all the supervisors to rate their employees honestly and accurately and and.
I agree.
And and reward our rock stars and not reward not good employees.
Okay. All right.
So. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else have anything else on this? Okay, Mr. Gomez, what do you have now for our, uh, list for the workshop?
Uh, well, in addition to the items, uh, listed?
That are, that are on here, yes, that we brought up. We're adding inspection of condominiums.
Yeah, building code, about building condo, building inspect, safety inspections to determine, uh, to.
Speed bumps on South Bay Shore.
Bumps on South Bay Shore and the performance appraisals.
Yes. Okay, take that in. And discussion of award of landscaping services.
Yeah, the, we have the Veterans Boat Parade Contract and just.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Reports and correspondence, commissioners. Have we got anything? There's, there's one thing I would like to mention. I don't think I've mentioned before. And that is, and there will be a, a, uh, an announcement on it. I guess, uh, there will be some media coverage. Uh, Madeira Beach will be getting turtle lights for Gulf Boulevard from one end to the, of the city to the other. Representative Chaney called me on that, and she's been working with Duke Energy, so that will happen, uh, sometime this spring.
We're, we're hopeful. I, I spoke with Duke Energy, uh, or exchanged some emails. Um, they were working on it. They didn't provide me a timeframe as to whether they would be able to, to have those ready or not, but I'll, I'll report back. They didn't reply to my latest request.
Okay.
I will follow up with them.
Okay, well, Representative Chaney's on them too.
And yes.
She's, uh, she doesn't turn loose. She's been very good from Madeira Beach.
She has.
Mr. Trask, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I do. I've sent you two emails in the last week or so relative to the need for a shade meeting on the case of Julie Henning versus City of Madeira Beach and Geico Advantage Insurance Company. Under Florida statute two eighty-six point oh-one per n eight, you have the ability to have a shade meeting on these items. The subject matter of the meeting would be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Uh, the estimated time, uh, for the meeting will be one hour. The people that will be in attendance, and I need to read this list, Mayor John Hendrix, Vice Mayor Helen Price, Commissioner Nancy Hodges, Commissioner Doug Andrews, Commissioner Dave Hudson, uh, Attorney Jeff Jensen, Attorney Andrew Salzman, and Attorney Tom Trask. We're asking that the meeting be set for Wednesday, March ninth at four P M. This is the time that, under the statute, I have to make the request in an open, public meeting, and so I'm asking for your authority to schedule that meeting. And then at that time, we'll actually discuss it. This is being requested by the insurance carrier's attorney or the city's attorney that is paid by the insurance carrier.
Okay, that, um, that date and time is fine with me.
It is with me, too.
I'm good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. That's all I needed to ask.
Mr. Gomez, I think you've covered everything.
Said enough, I believe. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Van Blargen, have you got anything for us?
I do. I want to thank the city manager for bringing up the Spanish part of the advertisement. It says on materials, but we would love to have him read that in Spanish next time. It would be very interesting. Yeah, and, um, that, I think that would be a good idea. But anyway, um, we have a forum tomorrow night here in this chamber from one of the Chamber of Commerce's, and is that at five-thirty?
Five-thirty, yeah. The Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce will be having the candidates forum, uh, tomorrow here at five, beginning at five-thirty.
And it will be televised.
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Okay, all right. Being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at nine forty-one P M.